Are we ready?
Everybody ready?
Are we ready?
All right. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? All right, well, thank you, everybody, and thank you for joining us here this evening on a beautiful day or evening in Placerville. Let's go ahead and have roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Present.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor No?
Here.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we do not have any ceremonial matters, no closed session report this evening, so we'll move to item five, which is the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
And if you don't mind, Councilmember Clarici and Vice Mayor No, can you switch your nameplates? It's just throwing me off a little bit.
Here I am, trying to go through anonymously.
And Councilmember Clarici, were you able to view the minutes or view the video of the last meeting?
No.
Otherwise, I think you might need to recuse yourself from this item.
Yes, I was gonna, yes.
All right, thank you.
I will recuse.
Gotcha, so four oh and recusal.
Well, no, not done these gentlemen.
Oh, on the consent, yeah, or on the, yeah, gotcha, okay. Let's go to item six, which are announcements and presentations to the public, and item six point one, which are brief comments by city council. And I'll start, or while I start today. How about John?
I'm nothing specific. Do remind everybody, I think it's this Saturday is the Rise and Shine event, and it's a great way to help volunteer and kind of spruce up the town. We go all over the place. I'm probably gonna be up at the cemetery up by Mosquito Road in the morning, so it's a good way to get involved.
All right, thank you.
I have none tonight.
All right.
I have nothing for tonight.
I just had the same thing John did, looking forward to seeing everybody for Rise and Shine, and I'll be out at Lions Park.
Yeah, same, I'll be, I think I'm gonna be at the cemetery as well, and then I'll probably move around and go to another location as well, but looking forward to everybody. It's always a great event, I mean, we get hundreds of folks to show up to help spruce up the city, and it is a lot of work. I mean, I know, like, last year, we were at the Upper Cemetery, and really, it helped keep that cemetery in pretty good shape for almost the whole year. I mean, we've had a lot of rain this year, so there's a lot of work to do, but we really appreciate everybody coming out and helping for that. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move to item seven, which is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. So I will go ahead, and is there anything, any item that council member would like to pull?
I don't want to pull anything, but I want to recuse myself from the minutes.
Understood.
Okay. Can I do that and still vote on it, or can I?
We'll have to take seven point one separately, then.
Oh, wow.
Okay, we'll do a separate vote on seven point one.
Okay, great.
So with that, then, I will open up public comments on item seven point one and seven point two, if there's any public comment on the consent calendar.
Three and four.
Oh, sorry, I turned my page, and seven point three and seven point four. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a vote on item seven point one.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do a roll call on item seven point one. The minutes.
Yeah, move to adopt seven point one. I'll second.
Quite the meeting. All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please, thank you.
Councilmember Clarici?
Abstained.
Excuse me, abstained, yes. Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, do we have a motion on item seven point two through seven point four?
Move to adopt items seven point two through seven point four.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we'll move to the public comment portion of the city council, and this is for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And we'll go ahead and start with item eight point one, which is oral communications. So anyone who has any non-agendized comments this evening? All right, seeing none. Item eight point two, which is written communications. Do we have any written communications?
Yes, Mayor Saragosa, we have received one item of written communication for twelve point one, but nothing for non-agendized items, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, so we will, thank you for that, okay? Well, this might be a first, I don't know that I've had a meeting where I didn't have at least one comment on item eight, so, moving right along. We don't have any items pulled from the consent tonight, or any ordinances or public hearings, so we'll move to item twelve, on item twelve point one, which is to receive public input on the downtown farmer's market and provide directions to staff on 2023 and 2024 farmer's market and possible action, including approval of sequin notice of exemption. And Mr. Morris has this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just quickly, the purpose of this item tonight is to provide an opportunity for discussion and public input on the status of a farmer's market on city property in 2023, possibly 2024, and provide direction to staff on how to proceed and possible action. As you recall, at your previous meeting, you have discussed this, and the direction of the council was to approve the moving of the farmer's market that is current, has in the past operated at the bell tower, and move that to the Mooney Lot on Upper Main Street. Following completion of that, there was some letters and an email received by council and staff regarding that meeting, and perhaps, public input was not allowed as much as perhaps we would have liked at that meeting. In addition, there was a reference to perhaps a violation of the Brown Act. That was reviewed by our city attorney at our last meeting and by council, and based on the review of that, the city attorney has written a letter in response to that stating that there was no Brown Act violation. However, the city council did want to come back and give an opportunity for more public input on the subject and a review at this meeting. So I don't know how much information you would like me to go through on this, Mayor and council, we've been through it a couple of times now.
Yeah.
But I can do as much or as little as you would like tonight.
Yeah, so let me, let me just say on this one, so, I think this is our, I think this is the third meeting, at least this year so far, on this issue, and I'd like to kind of apologize, I would do want to apologize for that, because we really strive to get things right the first time when we do things, and so it hasn't been the smoothest of processes as we've done this. So whether, no matter what your position is on any of this, you know, one meeting probably would have been the way to go on this, but we want to, you know, always err on the side of caution as we go forward, and make sure we have the input that we need. So for that, I do apologize that we've kind of gone down this road a few times, and I, hopefully, tonight, will have some finality on this. Cleve, I don't know if we need to really touch on anything else, I think what I'll say is, there was errors in this process, I think, by everyone involved. If you read the staff report for the public, you'll notice a few things on there, that after doing more research and as more things came to light, you know, we were able to see, you know, there was a lot of conversation between staff and the managers of the farm trails about discontinuing the use of the bell tower, and, but, the items still came back to us, and so, you know, we probably would have, in a different world, we would have had a listen in a different way, but we are where we're at tonight. And so, I'll let people kind of read through that, because I think the main thing tonight, really, is to get the testimony in and hear from folks, and then, you know, we can go into more discussion, so, I just wanted to put that on top. I don't know if anyone else wanted to hear anything else at this point from staff, though, I'm certainly open to that.
I don't know that I needed to hear anything else from staff. I did have just a couple of things I wanted to kind of put out before public comment.
Absolutely, yes.
So that if folks want to comment on them. One sort of thing that I don't think I've mentioned in previous meetings is, you know, Davis has a very successful Wednesday night destination farmer's market in their city park. It's been around for a long time, it's been incredibly successful, the location is quite similar to ours, it's a couple blocks from their downtown, across the street from a big church, you know, there's a ton of similarities there. And they, you know, I lived there twice, I lived there once when I was a little kid. At that point in time, they were running their farmer's market essentially on their basketball courts. So, they had a couple basketball courts, they shut that down, they ran it on the court. We do have a basketball court at Benning Park as well. It became so successful that eventually, they ended up basically building a dedicated farmer's market space, so by the time I went back there and I was in university, they had, you know, invested the funds, because it was wildly successful, and it's still running today and is wildly successful. So I guess, I just wanted to throw that out there, I know Eldorado Farm Trails has said they are not interested in that location, that's my understanding, and also, I think there's been some statements that they're not capable of running a destination farmer's market on a weekday, but there are other folks who've done it. So, I wanted to throw that out in case anybody wanted to comment on that concept during public comment today. So that was one thing, I think my other sort of thought or concern is, you know, there's a history of Eldorado Farm Trails not necessarily complying with all the terms in the previous agreement, and I'd sort of like to know what makes us think that they will change?
Excuse me, can you refrain from comments while people are speaking?
Yeah.
We will, we'll definitely be respectful of you when you speak to us.
What, what makes us think that will change in the future? I believe in second chances, I totally, you know, think there's a possibility to make that work going forward, but I, you know, I guess I'd kind of like to hear from Eldorado Farm Trails how they're going to change and have some comfort with that. I'd also like to, you know, understand what will happen if, say, mid-market, the terms and conditions are not being complied with, like, are we gonna shut down the market halfway through the season? Because I think that would be pretty detrimental to the farm vendors. So, that's some thoughts, I want to throw them out there before we get into public comments, so, I think probably members of the, the public may have thoughts on that, so I want to give you the opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gottberg. Any other comments before we open it up for public comment?
I'm, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a general comment about this. One of the things that, since we've had this come back to us several times now, is it's given us all a chance to really dig into it more and more and more, so that means that I have had a chance to talk to more people. There's a, there's a tendency sometimes to think that we don't talk to people, that we somehow sit up here, we get staff reports, and we just make decisions. Councilmember No and I actually went downtown and talked to merchants. I've done a lot of chatting with folks, merchants, staff, both present and previous staff, folks that were around when this thing was started. I've viewed the farmer's market sort of as it expanded over time, and I have talked to the folks that at first had concerns, and I heard their stories. This isn't about the vendors. It might impact the vendors, and I understand that, but this is not about the vendors, this is about Farm Trails, and how they've handled this situation. And the more I have dug into it, and the more people I've talked to, and the more information that I have received about that situation, the more comfortable I am with the decision I made, gosh, now, more than a month ago. Now, that may not be what folks want to hear, but this isn't a decision made out of ignorance, it's not that I don't understand this, I've, and on the Indiana side of my family, we have farmers that go way back, so this isn't about farming. I guess in California, my Italian family has what is considered farming now, and that is vineyards, in many places, and so, this isn't about that, this is about digging into what we got in terms of information and making a decision, and, but just know, this isn't about the vendors, this is about the way that the Farm Trails was running that thing up until now, and this has been going on for a couple of years now. So anyway, I just want to let you all know that, and I am, I welcome more comments from folks, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Clarici, any other comments at this point? All right, so I'm gonna go ahead, then, we'll go ahead and open up item twelve point one for public comments, so please step up to the podium if you'd like to make public comments on this item. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and I do love farmer's markets, but this one has become a hazard, and if it were moved to the Mooney Lot, I would go back to the farmer's market again, because then, there would be a place to park, I could go there safely, I could shop for the things that I would like to get from the farmer's market, and it would be great, but with it on Main Street and by the bell tower, I have shunned all of Placerville on Wednesday afternoons, because there's no place to park, and in my physical condition, I can't walk two or three miles, so I need to be able to park fairly close. If it's in the Mooney Lot, I can do that, because I can park right across the street and enjoy what the farmer's market has to offer, but the way it has become now, this last year, was impossible. You couldn't, you couldn't get to the farmer's market without walking several blocks, and there was no parking in the parking garage on the first floor, and I'm not capable of doing those stairs anymore, so the second floor is just not even an option for me, and I'm probably not the only person in Placerville to whom that applies. So if it were at the Mooney Lot, I think that would be wonderful, I think that would be an extremely good idea, a beneficial place to have a farmer's market. It's a nice, open parking lot, you can walk around in it, it would make a good circular way to walk through and contact all the vendors and be able to shop for the things you want from the farmer's market, so, I think the Mooney Lot would be a great, great thing to do, and be a lot better than having people out beyond the barriers, in the traffic lanes, and no parking in the parking garage, and all of the downsides of having it at the bell tower. Thank you.
I don't know if that works. My name's Greg Rockney, I'm with Rockney Farms, and I'm a little bit confused on why we're here today, on, you know, seventy percent of my income depends on this farmer's market, and it being moved to me, losing thirty percent is what is estimated on studies of moving the market, sales go down thirty percent. Being moved, so I'm, I'm worried about that, on losing money as my own business, and then, I'm confused on how we are saying that Farm Trails is mismanaged, I've seen nothing on that on any of these discussions publicly, maybe behind closed doors and stuff like that, but I'm very confused on, I don't feel, as part of the public, that I was informed on how Farm Trails has been mismanaging this market, and that kind of stuff, so for me to make public comment on that is very confusing to me. But as far as moving the market and that kind of stuff, I personally am working on, with a local investor in this town that has done a lot of stuff here, on making a off-city property location that we can have an event, you know, we can have concerts, we can have, you know, that kind of stuff, and not bother anybody else, not affect other businesses, and be surrounded by businesses that actually want us there, which I feel a lot of people on Main Street actually want us here, because we do benefit a lot of other businesses. Yes, there are a few that probably are annoyed by us, but as far as, you know, I'm pretty much asking, you know, move us to the Mooney Lot, and give us two years, and we'll be out of your hair. But as far as a market and other vendors that are there, that's what makes a farmer's market, is everybody that crafts locally, everybody that grows produce, everybody that plays music, everybody that does all these kind of things, and comes together as a community that invites other people from all over Eldorado County into that, and it's a good time, it's a fun atmosphere, everybody has a really good time, and it becomes family, like, I love all these guys that do the market with me. I mean, they are my family, we call each other all year, during the winter, we, you know, I order irrigation for a bunch of guys, they, you know, this guy here orders my potatoes, and we all share all of these things that we get, and it becomes a community, and I really feel misled into this today, because, you know, I'm coming down here trying to defend where we're gonna have a market and stuff like that, and then, I'm hearing that, you know, it's misled by Farm Trails, and mismanaged and that kind of stuff, and I think that Farm Trails, from when I started eight years ago to what it is now, I actually make an income and was able to quit my job and fully farm and spend time with my family all the time by doing this, and become a part of this community, and, you know, it really feels like that's being ripped away from me, and I have no understanding on why. So, thank you.
Hi, Scott Gregerson, I actually live in Pollock Pines, my wife and I moved up here in 2018, and we came from Vacaville, which had a full farmer's market every Saturday, they shut down the street, downtown Vacaville, it was a community event, and the merchants endorsed it, and they had special coupons from merchants, and so it was, it's a great thing, and it never had a problem. And when we moved up here, we really loved the fact that the bell tower had the farmer's market on Wednesdays, and contrary to this lady, we found parking, maybe not the first time around in a lot, but maybe the second time, we never had an issue with parking. Is there a lot of parking? No, but we did find parking. But at this late in the season, it seems really hard to say, let's end this, because it's, it's almost May, and if you want to have a plan, have a plan, and I agree with the person who just talked, Greg, the farmer, this is the first, as a public person out here, anything about violations of this person who is in charge of the farmer's market. I mean, nothing, I've read nothing or seen anything, and he's a farmer, and he knew nothing, so if there's a problem, hey, let's fix it, let's make it right, but just don't shut it down because you say there's a problem, when no one knows what that problem is. Anyway, I hope you do the right thing, I hope you have a plan, but don't take it out on the farmers, because they've had a hard, they had a hard last year, they had a horrible freeze, practically everyone lost their apples, and that's mother nature, and this year, we had a hard winter, but have a plan, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really short. Hi, I'm Jamie Boulay, and my family moved up here about two years ago, and part of what we love about Placerville is the charm of the Old Town. We moved from Elk Grove, which is a city that I think has done horribly wrong, to the Old Town area in the sense of bringing, or keeping that sense of community involved within, when we have other communities around us, that Placerville can really take some notes from and talk to other councils. Folsom, for example, they shut down their historical main, which is what is the beauty of Placerville, to encourage things like vendor markets. You have the capital downtown that has nothing but success in their markets, the market encompasses, and this is nationally, vendors and such, right, so beyond your fruits and vegetables, so I, there's a rumor floating around that says you guys are gonna shut it down to fruits and vegetables and get rid of vendors, I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm just saying, there's sentiment out there that feels like you're taking things away from the downtown part of Placerville without putting thought into it, so I have some questions for you. The National Farmer's Share Report states that direct-to-consumer sales means farmers, local makers, and the local community get the full financial benefit of their sales rather than traditional retail marketing. What has the council done as far as fiscal benefit comparisons to other cities to encourage markets, for example, Folsom and downtown SAC, similar to our Wednesday night market? Also, what kind of revenue impact surveys has the council done with local downtown businesses? I, as a public member, would like to see these surveys from every single business down here in downtown Placerville on what the impact is gonna be if you move the market. Additionally, the farmer's market encourages civic engagement and creates greater equity in a community. Why does Placerville City Council want to create limitations within a community that goes against supporting diversity and equity? Does the council not support inclusive engagement with its community and small businesses? Great communities have their core, strong, inclusive civic engagement that capitalizes on the ideas and talents of the members of the community. Local farmer's markets, including small businesses and makers, are the core of great communities. Why does the council seem to want to create barriers to prohibit civic engagement? And lastly, the farmer's markets constitute an estimated 250 million annual industry in California. Does the Placerville City Council support the benefit of this industry? If so, why not work with those councils, and now, what I'm hearing with the Farm Trails, to understand how to overcome the challenges and also understand the benefit of the area? Now, as a public sector employee myself, sometimes there's an issue with communication, especially in the government, and following the, giving the information, right, we get siloed, we get siloed in our jobs, we get siloed in the information. Is the information being communicated to Farm Trails so that they understand exactly what is supposed to be happening downtown? Are you communicating with your public to let them know exactly what's transpiring, or is this just the voice of a few that are upset at a situation that the rest of us don't have control over? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Ruth Michelson, merchant downtown. I think this meeting is, I mean, I think it's a given, we're gonna have a farmer's market this year, I think that's a given, and I think that you said at the last meeting that you wanted it to be at Mooney Lot, and I think we're meeting today more for a reason of process, that there was some process, from my interpretation, some process issues last time, that the Mooney Lot was brought up after public comments, people didn't get a chance to come and, and talk about that, so I so appreciate you bringing it forward again. It does seem, like others have said, there's a moving target, as the scapegoat, we had never heard before about Farm Trails being villainized as being problematic, so that is new information, and that wasn't in any of the writings that we, that were agendized, you know, for, so that's an issue, but I think that this is an opportunity, like you say, for the farmers, and by the way, my husband and my daughter were part of the farmer's market, she was an ag student at Davis, Sustainable Ag, and to make her spending money for schools, she had a garden, and she sold vegetables. I will say, as her mother and our, we spent probably more on the hoop house than when she actually raised in, selling vegetables, but you know, that's what parents do, and my husband also sold his photography, and of course, now we have a, we have our own brick and mortar, so he doesn't sell at farmer's markets. But the point is process, and I'm so glad you're having this meeting tonight, to let farmers speak about their concerns of not giving the one-year notice, so that they could let their customers know that they were moving, not to give that February first notice, not to give the 120-day notice. I was a contract manager for many years, I know about contracts, and for you to say, well, gee, we discussed the moving of the market, and that, that qualifies as notice? No, that does not qualify as notice, I can assure you, and I don't care what any attorney says, that is not notice. But, this is mostly for Farm Trails to, to discuss with you the contractual issues, and again, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward again, to give people a chance to discuss it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Pam Harris, I am a local girl, born here, raised here, used to come to this place, it was purity market, that ages me a bit, but, anyway, my family's a farm family, I also have served in government, so I have kind of a good perspective. I also have served in government, so I have kind of a good perspective about how government maybe should work with people. So anyway, I just have really a couple of issues that come to mind is I followed all of the newspaper articles, everything that's been in the media about this move. And it really strikes me as not well thought out because, you know, what I'm hearing behind the scenes is that there was a survey, again, I haven't seen the survey either. You know, it'd be nice to share the survey of the merchants downtown, but I did hear that a majority of the merchants approved of the market being at the Bell Tower. So that begs the question, why would it be moved? I do understand that there's a few merchants that have made quite a lot of noise and have been inconvenienced with people wanting to use their bathroom or maybe complaints that their customers are not able to access their building as easily as they would like to during the market. The market is one night a week, okay? And it's for a limited hour. So I find it a little difficult to understand that that would be a huge issue to have access to the pharmacy. The other thing is, is that we, I appreciate the comments about the lady who said, you know, she wants to be able to park nearby to access the market. But actually, the Bell Tower, or the whatever it is, the lot up here across the street from Mooney, isn't really very big. It's not anywhere near as big as the downtown lot. So I would be surprised if that lot wasn't full. And then you've got to scramble around to try to find on-street parking or whatever. So anyway, you know, I think the downtown lot is pretty darn big. The issue of using the restroom, I've lived in this town most of my life and I remember back when the public potty was put in and it was a huge deal and it was a huge amount of money to put in the public potty, but we lock the public potty up when we've got a market downtown. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, you know? And I understand, you know, there's issues with public potties, but there's solutions to these issues, is my point. The first I've heard of, oh, FarmTrails wasn't following the rules. Did FarmTrails know they weren't perceived as following the rules? That might be something that if you have a contract with an organization to do something with the city, that you might want to work with FarmTrails on that. And perhaps this whole relocation or resolution of issues might be something that would have been a better approach than just to come down and say, we're moving the market. You know, so, you know, and then I've heard that, oh, we just want to have produce at the market. You tell me one market in the whole state of California or in the nation that I've ever been to has had a variety of products besides just produce.
You can wrap up your comments, please.
Yeah, sure. So bottom line is, it creates a sense of a community, a place for people to gather. They enjoy coming to the market and I do hope you can reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And a reminder, it's three minutes for public comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Nick Kalbach. I've been a member of the Placerville community here for the last 15 years. And I was really upset when I found out that the market was moving from downtown. I actually am a Placerville resident closer to Pollock Pines, but I have a Placerville address. And so my wife and I really look forward to the market. It was the one time that we came downtown. It's the one time that we patronized other businesses in downtown on a regular basis because we were already in the downtown area. And it was one of the things that made this town really feel like a small town, like a place I want to be. I talked to a few friends about that. They shared the same sentiment as well. They were upset about the move from the downtown area because it was so convenient. Heard a few things about parking, but for someone that's lived in other areas, the downtown parking in Placerville, I think, is exceptional and easy to get to the market. I don't see the new move being the same. I think there will be parking issues with that. Lastly, what I wanted to share was when I heard that there was going to be other products being moved from the market and that it was only going to be vegetables, that just, I mean, a lot of this just seemed really short-sighted to me and I don't know all the details, but I don't think a lot of the details were available to the general public like myself. And I hope there can be some reconsideration or maybe look at some of the options to make this work because I think there'll be more of an outpouring from the community after a change is made and more people realize what we're going to be missing in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Alicia Eckness, local resident and supporter of the Wednesday Night Market. My address is about the parking. I have never had a problem parking at Main Street. I have handicapped parents. I use a handicap card every time I take them on Wednesday nights. There are eight handicap spots, I believe, in the parking garage. In the Ivy House parking lot, there are two. When the market was in there before, there was a severe problem with parking. It was the one designated handicap spot that a vendor gave up for a handicap. And/or that or park on the street. The parking on Wednesday night was great. If you didn't find a handicap spot the first time around, you went around. And the furthest one I had to park next to was the one at the, by City Hall. And never, never had a problem. The vendors, my parents, it was a senior date night. So we would go to dinner that we supported other merchants. We'd go to the candy store and they thoroughly enjoyed it. There were other seniors that would come and meet us so we could have a senior date night. And now I've told them that there's no more Wednesday night market and they're going to move it to a spot where there is even less handicap parking. So it just floors me that you guys haven't addressed that part of the issue. Moving it to a smaller lot with less parking and street parking wasn't any safer up here than it is on Main Street. So that's my comment. Thank you. And hopefully you guys weigh all the decisions carefully and think about the whole community, not just the vendors and the merchants on Main Street. This is all about a community and it goes from birth to 100 or plus. So, and we all attend that market. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Dave Evans from Goldenwood Farms. I've been part of this marketing for about five years. And there's a continued issue for the last five years about moving. I've moved from Sunday markets, been doing to different parking lots. And there was an issue of taking up parking spaces. So they moved us to the post office on Sundays. That started taking into the overflow of the hotel parking. And so this has always been an issue for the last five years. So looking at, I've been part of FarmTrails on Wednesday for the last five years. We take up actually, I think it's about eight parking lots on this strip around the Bell Tower. It seems to be not taking up too many problems. It's, and it's like some people say, there's no parking elsewhere. That's about what I'm coming down with the parking issues, but it's, that's about all I need to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Reinders. I'm a farmer. I'm also on the Board of Directors of Eldorado County FarmTrails. Also on the Board of Directors of the Apple Hill Association. I feel like I just got a slap in the face when you said FarmTrails is mismanaging the farmer's markets. The first time I have ever heard, I've been a board member for over 15 years, I've never heard any complaints. Yes, there's been complaints about the parking, there's been complaints about, from the merchants, but now you're throwing it that it's on the organization? I mean, I feel like I've just been slapped in the face. I think you're just looking for an excuse. This market does only good for this community. It takes EBT and we match it. We feed people who couldn't afford. I grow organic berries. I love to see the mothers come down to the market, be able to buy organic berries for their children. We take WIC. We're trying to really create a market for the community. And then we're told they don't like the type of people we're drawing? Senior citizens, people on EBT, people who need it? And now you're telling me the Eldorado County FarmTrails has not done, hasn't done their part? You're throwing it right on the organization? Well, you should have come to us at one of our meetings. We would have been more than happy to address your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to second, I'm Greg Henry. I'm in a unique position to speak because not only am I a farmer at the farmer's market and sell my produce there, I have also been the assistant manager for years and years and years now. And so I am intimately involved with what we're talking about here. And I have intimately been involved with the vendors downtown and also the merchants downtown. And I field their complaints constantly. I hear them constantly. I try to work with them constantly. I can tell you every one of their names. I can tell you every one of their complaints. And they've been having them for years. We've been having this conversation for years. And I've always extended everything I can to them. If one of my vendors is in one of Dennis's spots and he gets outrageous about it, I cater to him. I do the best I can to always cater to these people. We've worked very hard to work with the community and the merchants all the time. I'm like constantly trying to take in what they're saying and try to work with them. But yet, it seems like there's not that back and forth the other direction. I'm not getting any communication from the city council about what exactly we're doing. So it seems like we're talking about, a lot about opinions and not about facts, you know? So we're talking about the opinions of merchants downtown. So I would assume, right, if your main complaint is, they're affecting my business, right? So then shouldn't we just then be able to say, show us your numbers, right? So that we can talk about facts and we not talk about opinions, right? So the fact is, we're going to go from using five parking spots to 29 spots, right? Those are facts, right? Instead of talking about people's opinions and what they think, we've been there for 14 years, we haven't had a single safety issue, but people want to keep talking about this safety issue problem. The fact is, there are no safety issues. Let's start talking about the facts and stop talking about people's opinions. The fact is, we're good for this community. The fact is, we should be here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Hoover. I own Patrick's Garden up in Apple Hill. I'm here basically in support of my friends, my family. I don't even attend the downtown Wednesday farmer's market. Just like Greg Rockman said, we're not only here to support each other, we're not just friends, we're family. Farmers are some of the hardest working people around. I mean, I just got off work myself. I remember going downtown to the Bell Tower market when I was about eight years old. I used to walk from Markham. I would meet my dad at the market because my dad would sell at the market. So after school, I'd walk downtown, I'd help him set up, we'd sell, we'd go out to dinner. And it was booming, it was fun. There'd be a little guy with a little guitar, there'd be little kids over there, you know, grabbing some fruit that they just got from a vendor and they're eating and they're like, oh my God, this is the best piece of fruit I've ever had. You don't get that reaction when these kids' parents go to Safeway, Rayleigh's and they bite into this piece of fruit that was picked, you know, green. You need to set examples of these kids and show them that, where food comes from, how important that is, that, you know, hard work and all these things are so valuable that you're trying to just basically take it away. I mean, I still remember, my grandma owns Hooverville Orchards, I'm sure you've all heard from it. You know, I've been in this county for 41 years. I've seen so much with my time here and now that I, you know, after my dad passed away, I've been doing it for almost six years on my own up there. And it's like, I don't even, I don't even go into the markets here just because of all of this headache. I mean, I do six or seven markets a week, anywhere from, just like you said, the downtown Wednesday market, that's a kick-ass time over there. There's people dancing in the grass, there's people buying all this produce, there's kids running around. You're like setting the bar so high for these kids to see that just because it's a weeknight, you don't have to be at the house just doing homework. You could go out and have a good time and get some good food and entertainment. I do, you know, the downtown Davis on Saturday, I do Truckee, I do Tahoe. And some of those, there's so much support from so many people that it like, it makes me sad that we, that these guys here that work so hard, that they don't get the support that they need. There, you want to talk about small business and how these, you know, maybe some of the businesses downtown are suffering, but that's a small business too. But aren't farmers a small business? Don't they work hard just like those guys? Don't they, don't they, don't they need customers to come and buy their carrots or their fruit? It's the same. You need to sell the socks, they need to sell the carrots. It's the same. And it just seems, I'm just really pissed off because it's, I hear all these things going on and I just get frustrated with all of the, you know, logistics of everything. And I think they deserve to have a good backing market that people support them, that people want to go to because it's fun. These kids need that. I mean, you guys, I'm sure you guys all have kids. Don't you guys want your kids to know where their food comes and eat healthy? You know, it's not the same when you go to a grocery store. Yeah, you could buy organic, I'll wrap it up in a sec. Yeah, you can buy organic, but it's important that these kids know that that came from only a 10-mile radius. That's important to them. They're going to learn that and you got to teach that to them.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dave Smith and my wife and I have a candy business. I live in Garden Valley. The Vanna's Brittle. I'm not a farmer, but I am a vendor. What I, I'm a new guy. I've only been there for
A year?
Yeah, my first year. What I really liked about this market was I do a lot of events during the week, but on the weekend, I'm sorry, but during the week, there is hardly any markets. I worked at a aerospace company in Folsom that closed their plant. So this is our business full-time. As far as compliance, throughout the market, I get inspected numerous times from the county inspectors to make sure I'm compliant in my booth. And they go from booth to booth for food or giving samples and they make sure that, you know, we have our wash stations and everything is in compliance, which we are. And the people that run this market, they bust their butt. I mean, running a market, running an event is not an easy thing. It takes time, it takes money. And to be a vendor at a local market like this, I like doing better than going to Lowdy or something like that because this is my community also. So I really enjoy the market and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Farrington, Placerville city resident and self-described farmer's market nerd. Thirty-five-plus years, I've been excited to go to farmer's markets all through California and Oregon. I have never found one that's had such a community feel as the Wednesday Night Market. I know most of the farmers by their name. I see people making connections there with the merchants and the farmers. And I think it would be a shame to lose that without having conversation with all the interested parties. I don't get the sense that there has been a conversation between the farmers and the council and the merchants and the people who attend the farmer's market. And I think we do ourselves a great disservice by not having that conversation. by not having that conversation where we can come to agreements and not be adversarial with each other, where there's angry, angry words exchanged. We can head things off at the pass if we don't let them get to that point. I attended the Zoom meeting last time and I was surprised to come to the meeting understanding that it was going to be moved to the Fox lot or maybe left there or maybe put by the post office again. And by the end of the meeting, there was a whole other lot that they were put in. And there had been no conversation, no checking in with the farmers. Will their trucks fit in there? Will they be able to arrange their booths? Would, would things fit? Would it work? It was a unilateral decision, it felt like. Would, would people still go there? Would the, would the public like that? I, I really think that if we come together as more of a community and have that conversation, that we would all come out winners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mandy Rodriguez, haven't been here in a while. Good to see everybody. Farmer's Market nerd too, right here. Farmer's Market nerd. When I first moved to Placerville, I was so excited that there was a farmer's market here and I just love it. And I grab my little hand-knit bag and go down there and get tomatoes and carrots and all these great things. I always tell this story, I'll tell it till the day I die. Sue Taylor told me this story, actually. There was a guy who grew up here during the Depression. And he told Sue during the Depression, he did not feel, the people that lived in Placerville didn't really feel the effects because everything they had was here. Their food, everything they had, their supplies. They didn't really suffer the way that my grandparents did in New York. So that's a huge thing. When I was in my twenties, I used to go to Venice Beach and I would sell my jewelry there. I would take my longboard skateboard and skate down to Venice Beach and I'd throw out a sarong and put my jewelry there. And yes, I'm a farmer's nerd and I'm kind of a hippie. And the merchants across the way in the brick buildings didn't really like people like me selling. But it was a weird thing because we were a draw for them and they were a draw for us. I remember one time, Mr. Clarici, when you were on the city council a long time ago, and you came into my shop and you told me that the downtown merchants only take up, only make about 10% of the city's tax revenue, right? It mostly comes from gas stations and car dealers, grocery stores. Well, I didn't move here because of Thompson Toyota. I moved here, no, I like Thompson Toyota, don't get me wrong. But I moved here because of downtown and that feel. And so back to the thing about Venice Beach, now where merchants, where people like me used to set up and sell, it's been replaced by homeless camps unfortunately. And the brick and mortar people would probably give their right arm to have the hippies like me come back and sell our jewelry because we were the draw. So there has to be that line. And when I was downtown and I had my shop downtown, I listened to the merchants and I heard some of their complaints. But I have seen over the last year or two, all of our events slowly be taken away. And the merchants have to understand that these events bring a draw and they may not bring them their revenue that day, but it does bring it back at a later time. So that's all I have to say. I really hope you guys think long and hard about moving this farmer's market.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerardo Perez and I've been farming forever. I've been doing farmer's markets for 28 years. And I have the experience to do nine markets. Nine markets are hard for farmers because people like to go out to hang out. You know, we are doing one in Tahoe, Myers, and we don't do good there because people go out, you know, to have a beer to... It's not a farmer's market really, you know? They go out more for hangout, you know, whatever, you know? Actually, Placerville, farmers do good. I do good in Placerville as a farmer. Because people from the work in Placerville, you know, they come and shop before they leave. You know, and then we get a lot of repeat customers. Moving up here, there's nothing going on at nighttime. So we're not going to do any good over here. For example, Saturday, you got moved from the Ivy House parking lot to the back. We lost, I lost 40% of my income out of that move. So moving this market is going to kill the market at least for two to three, four, five years till we build a path again. So it's, it's going to be a big change in our, in our income or, yeah. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I could need mayor, vice mayor, city council members, staff. Thanks for taking the time to listen, everybody, tonight. It's really important. My name is Zachary Ford, I live in Camino. I made every single Wednesday last season at the farmer's market. I bought all of my produce there. That was what I took home, fed to my family, supported my local merchants. And guess what? I went into almost every single business every single week and I still do that. So I'm not from your city. I'm not one of your residents. But I'm a member of the community who's enjoyed having that farmer's market there. I can understand the parking issues. I, I know that I've personally been frustrated when I'm like pulling in the garage and doing circles and like, okay, I'll go to the second floor. Oh, this is full. Oh, third floor is permit only. Well, you know, maybe some solutions for you guys to look at is, can we make the first floor some more temporary handicap parking? Would that be acceptable? Is there, is there an avenue there? I don't have a solid answer to that. I don't know that answer. But is that something we can look at? Can we put up some more handicap placard parking on the first floor? Force people like myself up to the second and third floor that I can walk the stairs? I'm happy to take the stairs. Can we drop the permit-only parking on the third story so we can have more parking in the parking garage on Wednesday nights? That seems like a very simple solution to me. When you look throughout your guys' city, there isn't a lot of parking in the other lots. Period. The, the parking garage is the place to go park within the city. If I'm going to shop downtown, anywhere from Round Table all the way down to, you know, the Shell Station, I'm going to use the garage. So let's figure out how we can take the resource that we already have as a community and as public servants, which everybody here is, and figure out how best to make it fit the public. It's a great location. The parking garage is right there. It's a nice little off-street area. The traffic's still going by. It gets good visibility. It's a great place to be able to go and have a wonderful evening. So why do we need to move it? Why do we need to limit it to, you know, 20% merchants? Every, every farmer's market that I've been to, I'm kind of a nerd with it too, has vendors along with farmers. That's a great idea. And then as far as the Farm Trails thing goes, I'm sorry, but that seems like classic deflection to me. 100%. Not me, somebody else. I'm deflecting, don't look at me. To throw that out, sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on point here. To throw it out right before public comment starts is, I mean, it just is obviously deflection to me. Don't look at me. It's, it's the Farm Trails problem. If it has been, we heard from the Farm Trails. They haven't heard from you guys. I realize, I'm, I'm a public servant too. We operate in a silo. It sucks. I really do understand that. I've been, I've been in public safety for 30 years. We get stuck in the silo, but we have to talk to each other. So if there's a problem with another organization that's operating within your city, within your area, I'm going to be done, then talk to them. Let's find some solutions to the problem that everybody's bringing up to you guys. They're there, we have to get creative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I apologize for glancing up at the, at the timer. Unfortunately, it's the only timer we have. So I'm not trying to be rude to any of the speakers, but it's my only way to, to judge the time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yolanda Ramel. I'm a resident of Placerville. Been here since 2014, 2015. I started working at the Main Street Farmer's Market, which I enjoy very much. I'm a small business owner, I'm a Meridian Snowmore, I'm not a farmer, although I tried farming in my backyard. I admire the farmers very much so because I do not have a green thumb. I, every year, I'm pulling out the old plants and, okay, you didn't get me nothing, putting in some new ones and then again, it's gone. But I, I hear you. I hear you guys that there are some regulations that are probably need to be addressed, but it does need to be addressed to the Farm Trails and because they have not heard it from what we just heard, it's unfair to really say that because I, as yet, also haven't heard that we had any issues. Although there is times when, you know, I go to an event on Wednesday afternoon, one of the seasons, and I get yelled at by a merchant. It's okay, you know what? We hear you, we let it go or we let the management know, but they always deal with it by the next, the next week. I'm a stickler for rules and regulations. I've helped with events with the city of Placerville and doing like the Festival of Lights and everything. And I've worked with vendors. I am stickler for permits, business licenses. And I worked with the Department of Health and I know they've come and even checked my, my booth and make sure that everything is in top condition. They have no problem with putting any, or taking anybody's booth down and saying, "I'm sorry, you got to go." I've seen other communities where they had farmer's markets and they had food booths or vendors that are not as strict as El Dorado County. And I admire that because I do not want flies or bees in my food or anything and I'm sure nobody else would. You know, I, I admire the, the rules because it's safety for our community and our families and making sure that we, you know, we have a good time while we do that. But I do think that, and I've, I've held a position on board in Kern County, where you've got to listen to the people, not just hear them, but hear them. You know, there's a difference between the hear and a hear. So we need to just sit and talk and move things along. I agree, maybe we could use some more parking for the disabled. And on the first floor, I really admired that suggestion. So maybe think about everything, but take care of the main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Knoplesville. Been interested in this since the first meeting. And what I've seen and heard, because I've been watching at home and actually came down here, was that the farmer's market management specifically has failed to work with the, the brick and mortar stores around it to resolve and come to you as the council with a, basically a rubber stampable plan, written plan, to address all the issues that these guys are talking about. It's not a failure of you, specifically the, the council, but of the management to work with those businesses and to come to you with a plan. It's not, I wouldn't want to come to a group of people that don't run a market, don't run a business on Main Street, to come up with a plan. That's what I've heard that they're asking for. And I would suggest to the management to go work with the, the businesses specifically, resolve whatever issues they have and come back to you guys with a plan. If there's a problem with the city that the city needs to address, then work with the city management to address it. But without that, they're coming to you for adjudication on something and you never get what you want when you're asking for adjudication. You just want to come to you with a plan that everybody, that they should be going to the businesses and saying, "Hey, will you stand with me and support my business, with, support the farmer's market on Wednesday? If not, what can I do to get that support from those businesses?" So they could stand side by side with you and say, "We agree. This is the, the right thing to do and this is the plan." I haven't heard it. So when that happens, then you guys could move forward. But until then, it's on the management of the farmer's market to figure it out. Talk to you later.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Robinson. And I wanted to find the actual questionnaires. They were attached to this February 28th agenda, but they don't seem to be there anymore. But from what I understand, there were 80 questionnaires. There were 25 responses. Only four were negative. Four, one that said their delivery trucks had a problem. One that said they needed a designated parking for med pickup. One that said they just didn't do business as well. So how, how can four out of 50 be really significant? That's such a tiny, tiny sample. It's such a, so the last gentleman's saying, "Oh, you need to be with the merchants." Absolutely, we need to all work together, but it seems not really the issue. Myself, like many others, I'm a big farmer's market nerd. And when the market was here at the Ivy Lot, I'd write, walk from home, like Mandy, with my basket, my African basket. And I would almost be skipping on the way down. It was so exciting. I couldn't wait to see what I was going to discover that week. And also some of the food vendors that I also really looked forward to seeing again. So it was a sad loss for me when we moved from the Ivy Lot. And to be honest, I've never gone to the Vincini Lot Market. It just doesn't have the same experience for me. I mean, I don't know, I've never been, haven't got my car to go to the market. I have walked to Wednesday, of course, it's lovely. And I think this whole focus on community is huge and history. You know, markets are just, have that palpable feeling of history. I, I recently was in Boulder, Colorado. What a great farmer's market. Paris, how fabulous, walking in Paris and seeing all the, the food and the produce. It, it gives me goose pimples. It really was lovely. And I've been also in small towns in Italy where you come down and buy the salami right off the, the stand. So this is a big deal. The market is fabulous and I'll be really sad to lose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amanda Reinhardt and I own a business on Main Street. And I support our farmers. I support this market. I personally have been to farmer's markets around the world and there's something they all have in common and that's community. We need this market for our families. We need this market for clean food. We need this market and we need to figure, all I hear is parking a few disgruntled merchants. Usually people that are disgruntled all the time are negative and they need to work maybe a little extra hard to increase their businesses and be a little more positive in their own life. But I think it's important that we come together and you guys, we need to figure this out because we can't lose this market. I buy all my meat, my food, my dairy, my bread, my everything at this market. And we need to figure it out. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Carter, City of Placerville. My wife could not be here tonight, so I wanted to read something real quick from her, from Ruth Carter. While the new location is still on Main Street, the haste of the decision and lack of clarity before forcing the move has caused farmers, the participants and the Farm Trails a tremendously stressful and unintended financial hardship. She's calling on the city council to do the right thing to ink a multi-year contract with a one-year notice of change built in and the decision on the location needing to be made prior to February 1st for the following year. This will allow ample time to market the new location and the event needs to be changed again. And I wanted to talk about a couple of the nuts and bolts from the staff report in regards to this contract that you guys are considering tonight. First of all, I see that we're considering using the restrooms here at Town Hall as the restrooms for the market. And you're asking Farm Trails to provide a representative to watch over those restrooms. I think there definitely needs to be a little more clarity on, on how that's going to work and what their responsibilities are. Also, the removal of the vehicles. You say in here that you'll allow them to post signage at the market site to inform parking and the city will assist with removing parked cars from the area. I think that's going to be more difficult than you anticipate and there should probably be a stronger plan in, in place to address getting those parking spots cleared in a timely manner without having to tell anybody. Also, the non-agricultural products will be limited to products that do not compete with City of Placerville businesses. That seems a little broad and ambiguous. I, I would say maybe Main Street. But if you're saying you can't compete with any City of Placerville business, that's pretty ambiguous language for this contract. Also, the, the weekly submission of vendors needing, needing to be approved seems pretty onerous on city staff's time. staff's time. Anyway, I just think, you know, we've kind of made quite a mess of this whole thing, and we find ourselves in a really tough position, and obviously, the communication has been strained on both sides. And we really need to address some of these larger issues in this contract before we make a snap decision and really cause this market hardship that will probably result in it going away over time. So, I just ask that you consider those things, consider a longer-term contract, consider be having more specific language and allowing, you know, more movement room for farm trails. And I, to address Nicole, your comment, there definitely needs to be accountability, but it needs to be on both sides, and like I said, that communication really has to be more open and in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Owen, and I'm one of those managers of the Farm Trails Organization. I'm current president, and appreciate the opportunity to speak about this. I'd like to ask for five minutes as a member of the specific organization being discussed. So, I'm here again representing farm trails, again, in good faith. I've had three different meetings with the city, some with the farm trails folks, some by myself, with the idea that we would work in good faith and come up with a way forward that preserve the market, preserve the interest of the farmers, preserve the interest of the citizens, stakeholders, and the nature of downtown. One of the things that I've done since this issue arose is I've visited markets, and I'm lucky enough to have been able to do that on three continents, five countries, and six cities. And the only discord I noticed was when I consider to be my hometown, and that's kind of heartbreaking. We say we're in Ag County. In fact, one of the big things going on next week is Ag Day over at the county fair, and you'll have a whole slew of the county's third graders there learning about it. We believe it's important. There's other parts of the county that believe that's important. The mismanagement comment lead-in doesn't really match the conversations I've had with city management. We've mentioned, met with, "How can we make this work?" And that was the question we came out of with, with the Fox Lot, and that went nowhere because I was the only one evidently in there who was gonna believe that that was conversation that'd be met in good faith, because then it was the Moody Lot, okay? Then, we're gonna have problems, what I'm hearing is that because we're having problems with following our contract, that's mismanagement. The city had told us in an email that there would be a need to move the market, but that was never discussed formally or agendized by the council. But the communication was made to us nonetheless. Not sure about how that works. We did turn in our application on February 8th, and that's outside the contract, but so then is, you know, the termination notice that wasn't sent. The issue again was raised about why we're doing this. Seems like we're trying to make just a few people happy. If we sent out 50 surveys, which was an idea that I worked on with city management to say, "Look, let's think of what the stakeholders have to say," we got back 25 results, and I think there were 80 sent out, so I misspoke, sorry. We only had four negative comments out of 80 people who could have spoke up. That's 5%. So, that doesn't represent our approach towards having a majority of opinions drive public So, the Moody Lot is, we're ready to make it work. You know, we've realized that that's where we're headed, where, what pathway appears to be forward, but I think we need to not run each other down in the meantime. I think we need to respect each other's efforts. I mean, you guys are a volunteer council. We're a volunteer organization. We do things that seem to support the local area. We'd want support from you in doing that. The, I mean, we're not happy to be demonized. I mean, I'm not, I don't have a financial stake in the market at all. I'm here because it's the right thing to do, and I do believe in community. And I can see where some folks that would feel differently about that. It would feel that having all the market people have tomatoes so that they compete with each other, but don't compete with any merchants within Plasterville, doesn't match the approach that I've seen on any other continent, in any other country, or any other city. So, I beg us to have a look at that. Do a little bit better work with the stakeholders, do a little bit better, more conversation with the merchants. I'm happy to participate in that, but I think that we need to find that path forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
I know virtually every farmer and every vendor in the room, they recognize me because I've done business with them for years, and I'll continue to do business at the new location. So, and some of you know certainly John Corici because you were on the city council years ago when I was here to speak of the virtues of farmer's markets at the Ivy House parking lot. So, let's just go over a few facts. One, as far as no accidents nonsense, that bell tower's been hit a number of times over the years. If you look closely at the bell tower now, today, there's a portion of the concrete that's been damaged, a portion of the river rock casing is off of it. Bullards on Main Street get knocked down all the time. If you go to the end of Sacramento Street, there is a iron woodwork done to commemorate Snowshoe Thompson. It's been hit by a car, it's knocked over. If you can bend steel, and you can bend iron, and you can knock rock over and concrete, think what you'd do with a human body. And for those farmers who have their life savings or support of their family, just think about what would happen if a plaintiff's lawyer came to you after half a dozen people were plowed into by a car. It doesn't matter the merits of the case, you couldn't afford the attorney's fees, and if you think the million dollars that they come up with for insurance is gonna help you, nonsense. It won't do it. I attribute the problems frankly to a couple of sources. One is, as suggested, if the farmers don't know about these problems that's been going on, somebody within their organization didn't tell them, because all these issues were very clearly put out on the table two years ago, and it was clearly stated at that time, it would not be continued for all kinds of reasons. It does not help the credibility of those representing the merchants to make misrepresentations of fact. When my friend, our friend, Jim Owens, says that, "Look, it's not, look at the survey." Well, the survey is misleading because you're talking about respondents. Several of you have gone out, as I have, talking to merchants in that area, and every single one has had problems with it all. That's 100% with the exception of the bike shop, and he isn't open. He doesn't bother to open on Wednesdays. You're gonna have, and when someone says that this is smaller, smaller in terms of linear distance, but not square footage, and if you're talking about problems with the merchants, just think common sense. If you have people who are selling the same products as brick and mortar, you've got soaps and jewelry and so on, they're on Main Street. And then, someone selling handmade baskets, one of the vendors, right in front of a shop that sells the same thing, that's gonna be phenomenally successful. How do you know? Because it was at the Ivy House. I went around and interviewed everybody in that area, and they were all supportive of it. So, you're gonna have a welcomed environment at that point. That's why I would suggest, lastly, sum it up, and I guess the last point is I'm extremely disturbed and do not think they did themselves well when those representing the vendors started talking about boycotts. There's been that kind of hostility that's expressed. That's why you didn't see many merchants come in here, because they've been threatened. What would you think if we went up to Crystal Basin and said, "Don't go to the winery anymore"?
Sorry. Thank you. All right, I am going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Oh, you got one more? Yep, absolutely. Come on forward.
Hello, my name's Dave Eckness, longtime resident here. Currently live in Pollock Pines, but I still frequent the market, and I support the local vendors and am one of the vendors there as well. Where do I start with this? I understand the safety concerns, and I thank you for hearing us out today, but we have done everything we can to try to mitigate any safety concerns. The gentleman's suggestion of opening the lots at the top of the parking garage, wonderful idea. Easy fix to the parking solution. That lot seems empty all day long, all day. Hardly anyone uses it. If you open that up, that would open up a world of parking. Eliminate your parking problem, put more handicaps on the first level. Simple solution right there. When you talk about people running into actual structures, I've never seen that happen once. I get there early. We get there at 2:00, 3:00, 3:00 o'clock sometimes, set up. Never have ever seen a vendor once hit that. People coming down the street when there's no vendors there and there's no barricades, yeah, I've seen accidents. They would have to barrel through four vendors to be able to hit that thing. So, the fact that they are getting blamed for damage that we are not causing is nerve-wracking. And I apologize, I'm very emotional about this because I grew up here. I remember during the recession when these streets were empty, you'd walk past empty buildings every single day, and then the markets happened. The market started, events started on Main Street, people started coming back. That fostered economic growth. My wife's business started at that market. We are here as a brick-and-mortar. 681 Main Street, I encourage all you to come down. We are bakery. We provide fresh baked goods to this community, and we started at that market. Without that market, we would not be in business. That market accounts for 30% of our income every single year. We support all of the vendors at that market. We support all of the merchants on Main Street. I go into the hardware store constantly and buying stuff. I'm inside Robinson Pharmacy, buying different snacks and little goodies and trinkets. I'm inside the newsstand. I'm inside Sour Donut Co. all the time. We support all of the vendors and the merchants on Main Street. So, the fact that there is this hostility coming towards us really hurts. It really, really hurts. And I feel that you guys moving this market from the downtown location where it's a focal point, it drives business and fosters that economic growth for next generations, moving that hurts the community. It hurts the people that live in this community, it hurts the people that support this community, and it hurts your status and your positions here because you are helping drive this hurt in this community. I am, I apologize, I'm getting very emotional about this, but it is very close to my heart. I remember when Plasterville was once a wonderful city to live in. There were events up and down Main Street, the car shows, the antique fairs. Those things were wonderful. They brought in outside businesses, but the fact that you guys are taking those away hurts. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment now. You have, we have one more? If you wanna line up, that way we're not continuing to...
Just here?
Yep, come on forward.
Hi there, I'm Emily. So, I started working at the farmer's market last year, and actually, we changed the barricades to make them safer for people filled with water. Really hard to move those when there's water in them. Nobody can get hurt from those, and I even do EBT. We provide a lot for the community, and I think it's really heartbreaking that you guys wanna rip that away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council and everyone here. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a born and raised El Dorado County Camino member, and I'm back from being away, and I have such a heart for this community, and it pains me to see any kind of dissension amongst you, City Council, and community members, and I'm just looking, and I know. Okay, so, my thought is that somehow, look to your hearts, all of you, so that we can maybe keep our heart of Plasterville thriving. That little tiny town in Plasterville, every time I came back home to this area, I love coming to that farmer's market. In fact, it made me so happy to come to the farmer's market downtown and that you're all together as one big family, that I can go to Robinson's Pharmacy, that I can go to the cheese shop, that I can go downtown and get tomatoes when the farmers are here. I just have a heart for it, and again, I thank you all, and I hope that we can look at our hearts and think about how to really make this work so that we can keep the quaintness of Plasterville, the quaintness of our little city town, and the safety working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Coburn, owner of Sweet Perrings Bakery. Just kinda backing my husband. I thank you guys for listening. It's really hard to have these conversations constantly, and then we always seem to get like one more little curveball thrown in on something that we weren't prepared to even talk about or go over. It doesn't even give the farmers a chance to actually look at what we have kind of statistically to look at. So, I know in the last meeting, one of the big things that I, from your guys' point of view, should be a big concern was a price on having to like put in those yellow barrels with the water in them. That can be expensive, but we weren't talked about like a price and how much we would need to increase what we're paying in rent. And so, to be actually able to sit down together to actually work on all these numbers would actually be a big benefit. And looking at what you guys are saying that we are just doing like out of code or not correct, if you guys could pinpoint and bullet point that would be amazing, instead of just saying, "Well, we're doing stuff wrong." It would be a big help for us to be able to talk to you guys and give you strong arguments so we can actually go back and forth and have an actual conversation in order to actually come to a real resolve for this. I understand where you might need us to move. If that's what needs to happen, I'm totally in support of that, but if we are gonna do that, the best way to do that is to give us the time to make sure everyone knows why we are moving, where we are moving to, and how people can park or safely get to that event. So, like going to the park, there's no park, parking area at the park, so then we also need the time in order to go to like the church and the bank that's across the way and get permission from them firsthand, and that can take months to build a relationship with those owners and, you know, that part of the community, to get that relationship, to give them the trust in us that we're gonna have people coming into their space, parking in their lots, and it's still gonna be okay, they're not gonna come in the next day, and it just be completely trash. So, that takes time. So, if we can just make a decision, but then give us the time to implement everything incorrectly so that we can communicate with anyone that we need to communicate to, make sure we have safe parking, which the parking structure does provide safe parking, you know, going up to the third floor if like after 3:00 PM that opened up so that the farmers could move their vehicles up there, that would be great, and then that would open up more spaces in the parking garage. I think that's part, main ones that I wanted to hit up, but just make a decision and then give us time to implement it. We need time to communicate to everyone that we're serving where we're gonna be moving to. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, now I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment on this one. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion, and thank you, everybody, again, for all the comments. I really appreciate it. Unusual to get this many people, so I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. All right, anyone wanna go first?
I'll jump out there. I would like to jump out there first.
Sounds good.
There's a lot of questions, comments, so there's a lot to address, so I'm not gonna hit it all at first. I'm sure that we're gonna work through this, but I just wanna kind of start back from the beginning. I mean, it was a few years ago where all the merchants were complaining about all the events on Main Street, and the council has had to work to reduce those because those businesses downtown are being affected. And if you're shaking your head, that's great that your business isn't, but there are a lot of businesses that are, and there are more than just a few businesses that are suffering with the farmer's market down there. I know because I walked and talked to the businesses. If you wanna know why those surveys aren't available anymore, it's because people were threatening to boycott and try to put those people out of business. That's the reality of dealing with this discourse in this particular subject, and it's a shame that way, because I'd love to give you specific examples, but I'm not going to jeopardize those businesses with those examples. So, I mean, the bottom line is this market is really affecting many of the businesses downtown, and those downtown merchants work just as hard as you do. They really do. And when you say... when you say one day a week, you're saying one day a week for five months, you're saying 20 days. And then we're saying, we've reduced it now down to seven Main Street events, so there's seven more days. And then there are some bell tower events, you know, there's a few more. So we're talking a whole month's worth of events, more than 10% of the year that we're doing this to the merchants. Besides the fact that they've had to work through the pandemic, they've had to work through the Caldoire fire when they shut down Highway 50, they've had to work through the PSP, PG&E outages, our downtown merchants have been through a lot these last few years. And I didn't see any appreciation from anyone here for all what they have to deal with and go through. And so it's a little bit frustrating, you know. I mean, if everyone was working together, we wouldn't be hearing this at all. If the assistant manager and the manager had been able to work out the differences with the businesses, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. Ideally, that's what would have happened, right? I mean, ask yourself, why are we doing it? This is the City Council level. It's because it hasn't worked down at the other level. So that's, you know, a little frustrating to me with the lack of responsibility. I mean, we've heard from the assistant manager that he constantly hears complaints. That's what we heard in February from the manager, that we know there's lots of problems, but what we didn't hear were the solutions. And how you've tried to work through those solutions and you know, there's a lot of problems. I'm gonna let someone else talk for a little.
Well, and I'll just chime in a little bit here is, there is a difference. There is a difference between being a business that's a brick and mortar and then having something pop up in front of your business for five months a year for five hours a day. I mean, that's essentially, you're talking about two to three days out of the month that you're being affected if you put all those hours together. I can tell you, as in someone that bills hourly, if I was losing five hours a week on billable hours, that's a lot to me. And I would assume if you're selling something and you have a, you know, you're losing sales for five hours a day, once a week, for five months, that's not something to just to say, well, they should just suck it up. Because that's, you know, it's what's best for the community. Excuse me, we don't talk from, I've been respectful for everybody, please be respectful as we speak. Anyways, so there is a difference. There is a difference when you have, you have an expectation as a business that's here on Main Street, that you're gonna be able to do your business and not have necessarily something pop up in front of your business. When you sign your lease, that's not what you're looking for. And I would bet that if anyone else had those, I mean, there may be some people that benefit from it, but the reality is that some don't. And we don't get to pick, well, only 21% are affected, so that means 81, you know, then it should be fine. No, those are still vibrant community members for us. And so we have to look at that and take that into consideration as we go forward. It isn't something that we can just shrug off. Third floor parking, that's the parking for our business owners that work on Main Street. That is, that's where they park. And so that's why they pay for it and that's why they're up there. They may not always be filled, but that's their parking spaces and that's where city employees also park. So it isn't just an easy solution to say, we're gonna take that apart and let that be, you know, work for something else. There's things that we have to take into consideration. And that's why it's been sort of whack a mole with all the, you know, city parking lots. It's hard because you move it to one spot and then other businesses complain and we've had that. Or we had too many farmer's market and they were cannibalizing each other. And that's why the original conversation came up two years ago, because none of them were really being that successful. And so some of them worked and then some of them went away. I mean, that's sort of the American way, right? You don't just automatically support all of them. They sort of took care of themselves in a sense. And there's also plenty of private lots. You know, the thing that we have to provide a public location for our private venture is also another, I mean, the owners or the people that run it could certainly look at private lots like what happened on Saturdays as well. So I'm happy to do it at Mooney Lot. I think it's, you know, a good compromised location, but I just also want to put it on the record. So September 13th, 2022, there's an email from Terry Zeller to Shawna Hartzel, actually it's an email from Shawna to Terry in September of 2022 asking, is the city of Placerville canceling our contract for the current location? And the answer is yes, I have been given direction from the City Council to end the use of the bell tower for farmer's market. So it's been well over a year, at the very least, that Farm Trails has had knowledge, constructive knowledge of the need to move this lot. And we've had public, we had at least a couple of public city council meetings prior to that, and now we're on our third one in the last three months, two and a half, three months, on the same issue. So there's been a lot of public input on this issue. This isn't something that's just sort of jumped out of nowhere. So I just, you know, want to put that out there. I don't know if, did we make copies of these available for the public, the email? If you wanted, if you have any extra one, just pass them around because I just want people to know that this wasn't something that just capriciously popped up from the City Council. There was actually a lot of conversations that were going on at the staff level. Unfortunately, to the Vice Mayor's point, this wouldn't have even gotten to us if this had been able to be resolved. This is not something that we would normally have this level of oversight over, but there hasn't been able to, you know, have that agreement be put in place. Let's see. Anything else I wanted to comment at this point? No. Any other comments from council at this point? General comments?
Sure, I'll just make a couple comments related to some of the concerns about the contracts. So some of the things for me were things like the street being closed prior to 3:00 PM, which is a specific term in the agreement, the list of vendors not being provided. Again, that's a specific term. So just for people who wanted specifics on what I was referring to, it was things such as that. So I'll just say that right now.
Thank you. Councilmember, switch.
Yeah, it's not deflection. Deflection would have been if you accused me of something and I said, Michael did it. That's deflection. Yeah, and you probably did. Okay, this is, once again, this isn't about that. This isn't about the farmers. I mentioned the farmers. Oh, by the way, also, my wife's great grandparents were the Jaquetes. You might recognize the road up in Smith Flat. They used to own a pear ranch, pretty good size when they did farming up until not all that long ago. I think one of them's still up there, working up there. This isn't about the vendors and this is about, once again, interactions. Now, the other thing too is, I get somewhat amused when the folks that, the folks, the folks that come to us and say that they don't feel safe, we have to take them seriously. We can't simply just say, well, they don't, you know, there's plenty of places to park. What, you are, you know, there's plenty of places. We can't dismiss, and the one person isn't the only person that has told us this, the issue of going down there, maneuvering around in that space. The merchants who have the temerity to say something about the farmer's market in the negative are complaining, they're angry, they're angstrid. And I feel the gentleman used one phrase to probably describe Dennis Thomas. And it's like, that's interesting. I don't know how you're going to make a constructive solution when you look at the people that are complaining as literally not being happy people. They're not happy people. No, they're merchants. They voiced concerns over multiple periods of time. Multiple merchants making very similar kinds of concerns known to us. Now, what are we supposed to tell them? No, your concerns are not warranted? That thing that you think is happening in your business isn't really happening in your business? You're, you should, whatever. You know, we get accused enough of not supporting the merchants on Main Street. And then when we actually come out to support merchants on Main Street, we get accused of, I don't know, supporting the wrong ones. The, it was, it was 80, what, 80 surveys, 20 something responses? 25 responses. You don't get to, you don't get to pull the 55 that didn't respond and say they all would have been on our side. One of the things, Jackie and I did it together and I mentioned it before, and then I went back downtown and I talked to a lot of merchants and they, many of, not all of them, some of them were fine. I'll admit that. Some of them said, no, I don't have a problem with it. But a lot of them, or some of the ones I talked to, didn't have a good time with it. They did not respond. And the reason why is what we saw happening, and we mentioned this, and I see people, well, that's not us. Well, you know, when people are talking about boycotting businesses on Main Street, that's something that's happening and you can't just dismiss that. And the people, and some of the people that commented in the survey wish they hadn't because that's what they got dragged into. So what are we supposed to do with that? Ignore them? If a solution, that, I'm talking. No. It's called, that's called a rhetorical question. It's a rhetorical question and that is it.
Please, if you can, public.
I asked that question because I want you to think about that. I want you to think about what you would do. An example. Yeah, we can't, the parking is leased. They lease those parks. Those are very expensive parking spots. All these parking spots in town are expensive, the ones that you have to actually buy than a lease. They're not cheap. And once again, the brick and mortar businesses buy those leased spots for themselves and their employees. The people that have the brick and mortar businesses. Parking has gotten way too much of the discussion here and it is an issue, but that's only part of it. Once I, like I said, I, the more I talk to people, the more I've delved into this, the more I have asked the questions, the more responses I've gotten, the more information that I have gathered, I am comfortable with the decision I made before. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, David?
All right, so first off, I want to thank all of you for being here. Honestly, I wish we had more people show up for many other things as much as you guys have shown up for the farmer's market. So thank you for your participation. This is our forum to find out what everybody wants to know. So if we don't have you people sitting here when it comes up, we don't know. Other than it comes to a second meeting and it comes to a third meeting and now we're digging in as much as we possibly can at this point because we're getting the information late. All right? So thank you very much for coming. Please keep coming to all of these things, whether it's farmer's market, whether it's a street repair job, or whether it's, you know, moving something in town. Keep coming because we need your information and this helps us. So we get better information so we can make better decisions, so we can work with everybody in the community, not just one side or the other. Because we all have to do this together. Because if we don't, we're all failing on both sides. Okay? I'm gonna address a few things in here. I'm gonna start with the parts that have been kind of the big part and that's the contracts. I look at contracts on a daily basis. It's what my job is. I have mulled over this contract for hours, have gotten up at 4:00 in the morning to literally write notes to myself about this contract. And I'm not gonna go into the technicalities because we've been hammering technicalities all night long. My biggest recommendation for this is not only for Farm Trails management, but also for staff management, is when you guys sit down to actually hammer out this contract, put it in clear, concise language. Because the last one was not clear and concise. The last contract in my business, what we call a handshake contract. Too many gray areas, too many one ways to this, too many one ways to that. Technicality wise, both sides were at fault on this. This isn't one side or the other. This has to do with bad communication. It has to do with not following, at least on the part of the contract that was clear, not following the clear, concise part of it. So on that, that part of it, I'll end there. When it comes to the safety, this safety isn't about the vendors and you guys standing out there on the street. From my understanding, it was about two years ago that we had to put up the barriers. Okay. So those barriers and stuff, that was an insurance thing. Literally, the insurance company came to the city and said, you have to do this. Obviously, we're gonna have to follow the insurance policies, so it's something we had to deal with. I understand it because basically about two years ago, if you remember in the news, there were a lot of people driving through farmer's markets, whether it was on accident or on purpose. So unfortunately, the city was forced to deal with that kind of stuff. So it had nothing to do with you vendors or you guys causing safety issues. This was just strictly insurance policies. Let's see here. Parking evils. Now, I've only been on this council for four months. I've been in this county for 25 years. We have had parking evils for years. And unfortunately, it's something we have to deal with. This city does need to come, start figuring out what to do about it. Unfortunately, that takes money and that takes grant and that takes time. So hopefully, at some point in time, we can get that fixed. That is definitely something that we're gonna deal with in definitely the long-term future until it does happen. I've also seen a small theme here of moving markets. Well, that's because I really hope at this point, it's because of space, it's because of public property versus private property. That can definitely be solved one of two ways. One way is, of course, finding private property to work this out on, so you guys never have to worry about it again. Or making yourselves successful and big enough, okay? And unfortunately, I know that's hard to do, being moved, okay? It's not easy. I do understand that from a small business perspective. But making yourself big enough to come to the city and go, hey, you know what? We're outgrowing this. How can we all work together to figure something out that makes it bigger and makes it permanent? So we're not moving every year. We're moving every two years or moving every five years and causing a financial difficulty, not only for yourselves, but for the city itself too. Personally, I think this movement from downtown is not only affecting, of course, the farmers and the vendors, but I think the merchants are gonna see something, you know, they're gonna see an effect too, whether they think so or not. I think the merchants are gonna be losing out on Wednesday nights, honestly. Okay? So to finish this off, I highly recommend that all of you that are vendors and farmers that are participating in this market, attend your board meetings. If your board is having a meeting, go to it and say, what does our contract say? Are we following our contract? It is not just the management's responsibility to make sure that you guys are doing what you're supposed to do. It's your responsibility too. And it's your responsibility to hold the city accountable to make sure that we're following the contract for you guys. So if we can all work together and get that taken care of, that's gonna solve a lot of problems. And then hopefully, for years to come, we have this farmer's market. With that being said, I want to thank all of you once again for coming.
So I just had a couple additional things I wanted to say. I sort of echo if we're entering into a new agreement, we need to make it very specific. I'd also like to make sure that we have something in place as to if the terms are not followed, how we're gonna address that, if we're gonna have a single warning and then move into immediate termination if it's not fixed. Or, you know, specifically, like, we don't get our vendor list by 5:00 PM on Monday, which is in our contract term, what do we do? And what happens in that event? Or the parking lot starts getting closed down at 2:00 PM rather than 3:00 PM. So I just want us to sort of have that very clearly set if we're moving forward into a new agreement. You know, I'm open to sort of the same decision we made previously of allowing a contract this year for the Mooney Lot. The Mooney Lot is downtown. It's on Main Street. It's less than 1,000 feet, less than a quarter of a mile from the bell tower. I've actually measured the distance because I wanted to know exactly how far it was away. So this is not a big move in terms of distance. I know I've spoken before about the safety concerns. I've done work where a car has run into water barricades and moved the water barricades about four feet, very similar speed limit in Morgan Hill, downtown Morgan Hill, similar geometry. So I have pretty serious concerns about safety on Main Street at bell tower closures. I voiced that on multiple events, not just this one. Some people who know my history, I did have a partner who was killed when hit by a car walking down the street. So it's a very personal kind of thing in terms of I do not want anybody else to experience that sort of tragedy and loss. So I feel strongly about that. I've said it multiple times. I still feel very strongly about that in terms of moving the market to a safer location.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think we need to be realistic and really talk about the goals too. When the farmer's market first started at the bell tower and we had no problems and issues, it was a small farmer's market right at the bell tower. And then it kept expanding and expanding, which of course takes up more and more parking. You can't have 40 vendors without at least 40 parking spots being taken up by those people. You can't have 40 vendors without at least 40 parking spots being taken up by those people. You know, I, different locations work for different cities. And on Main Street, I think a small farmer's market works. You know, I heard them say they want to have it big, they want to have, you know, music, we want to have this, we want to have that. That's great. Main Street probably isn't the best place if you want to keep growing and make that. And it's not that people don't support farmer's markets. We have seven farmer's markets on this West Slope. You know, we have three in Placerville, two in Garden Valley, one or two in Cameron Park, one in Eldorado Hills. You know, so there, there are farmer's markets. It's not that nobody wants a farmer's market and it's not that we didn't want this one. You know, moving it down the street isn't, not downtown, it still is downtown, it just wasn't the right location there in the middle of so many businesses. We moved it where we thought would have the least impact to the merchants downtown, it could still be viable for the farmer's market. But, you know, moving forward, you really have to think about that. If you want to build a really big market, Main Street's probably not going to be the right place for that. Because you're eventually going to start impacting other businesses. So, you know, I just want to have that part of the conversation because, you know, you looked at, you know, everybody brought up different cities and their different locations. Well, they're not all on Main Street. They're at parks, they're at medical centers, they're at colleges, they're, you know, in, in various locations and, you know, that's, that's a great idea. I think those are great locations to, to consider, but Main Street is very small, it's one of our thoroughfares and, you know, having a huge market five months out of the year is, is probably not going to be the best solution for us, for, for everyone in, in Placerville. So I, like my fellow members kind of agree with our previous decision. As I said, I've, I've talked to many merchants downtown and there, there are a lot of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, you know, I think one of the things we have to do is look at what, what our options are. I know we, there's been a couple of comments about the previous, the previous vote to move to the Mooney Lot. But I think we need to reaffirm that if we're going to do something and just looking to counsel on, on this in terms of, so if we stick with, if we, if there's a desire to continue at the Mooney Lot, do we reaffirm that vote or how, how would we?
Yes, I would like additional direction however. I did hear clear and concise language for a new agreement. There's additional deal points that are very loosely framed in the staff report. I'd like some direction from the council. If the council will authorize that I work with the city manager to draft an agreement centering on those deal points, but authorizing the city manager to have some flexibility in substantive deal points as approved in form with the city attorney as necessary to effectuate whatever legal frameworks there are. You're also having a resolution that's part of your recommended action that is, it's pretty broad, it just authorizes approval of the agreement as well as a notice of exemption, finding that approval of a farmer's market is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it's an existing use. So those are the actions that are before you. So if someone wants to move approval of those and second that, that would be great.
Understood. Thank you.
And I, I think we might want to verify that we're, this idea of the breadth of things that could be sold, I don't personally, I think if they move to the Mooney Lot, they can sell anything. That is in the purview of farmer's markets. So we actually got a definition that is pretty broad. You know, the, the fruits, the fruits and vegetables and then the artisan crafty things and those sorts of things are permissible to be sold in farmer's markets, which I think probably covers most of what was being sold down at the Bell Tower. There was, I don't know if that covers like tamales and stuff, which were very, very good by the way, tamales.
Yeah, I guess on that, sorry.
No, go right ahead.
No, I just, I mean, this is right next to Hometown Cantina, so, you know, I don't know if we want to allow them to sell prepared foods like tamales because I think that would be direct competition with an existing brick and mortar restaurant.
Man, I'm sorry. There is a guy that has his hand up.
I'm sorry, we, public, public comments have closed, I apologize.
He's one of the farmers. It's up to you.
Yeah, go ahead. He's the only one, by the way.
With that in mind, like you said, when we heard that you were moving to the Mooney Lot, we went directly to those businesses and asked them, is this going to be a problem? And they said, no.
We should confirm.
Because we do tacos, we do that and stuff, but as they, we went directly to those people knowing that that is something that we're, they had no problem.
They're very good by.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, my question in, in what you're talking about, because I've had conversations with many of the public too and, you know, some of the comments I heard is, we really want to make sure we have a farmer's market. We don't want two or three farmer's booths and, you know, 20 artisan booths.
My recol, yeah. My recollection was, at, at some point up at the Ivy House one, we, not originally, but eventually went, there was some sort of, I think there was a ratio, if I remember correctly, you know, might, what, 60% fruits and vegetables, 40, I mean, you know.
Can I make a recommendation?
Go right ahead.
Okay, we, we have Mike Owen here, President of, could we have him come up, maybe answer a couple quick questions for us?
I, yes.
I think that might help.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not the mayor.
Yeah, it's fine, this is a little unorthodox, but yes, go ahead, Mike, if you want to come on up.
Thank you for the invite. I can't really claim expertise on this, but I think there are some guidelines that Shawna was trying to get to Cleve. There's something, and I'm, please don't quote me, between 75 and 80% of the, the market offerings are supposed to be from locally sourced products. Now, the ambiguity gets in there, guys, when it isn't a tomato. Because if you make soap out of goat milk, or you weave, which people do, I know, you know, try it out sometime. There are things that aren't ostensibly a tomato that have local origins. Now, Cleve put up a, a pretty accurate thing that's on the fence called the snow cone. Well, is it local ice or local syrup or local what? And so, you know, that kind of stuff isn't, you know, it is ambiguous. The thing I could tell frustrated Shawna a little bit when she, she walked out a couple minutes ago, the requirement to have exactly who's going to show up on Monday to you and then be shot in the street or who knows what, if the wrong people show up, or you have to do substitutes at the last minute, or their crops don't come in, or their truck breaks down, you, you can't, you can't make that punitive, Nicole. I don't think that's, that's an appropriate approach. I mean, we can give you the list of all the people who are invited to the market and our, our accredited vendors, that kind of thing, but every Monday, I don't think that's realistic. And what I don't want to do is sign up for things that if you fail, then, then you look bad doing it. We're happy to be completely transparent and in good, you know, in good faith. Time number five, good faith, I'm still here. So let's create some room for goat milk soap, okay? And let's, let's create some room to make the, make the market work. And, you know, we're amiable to try this new spot. And, but let's not make things where they, where they rub together a little difficult, let's not make it punitive. All right, the community spirit needs to override that stuff. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mike, and I appreciate that. And I think that, that makes sense. I mean, the idea would be, you know, it's, it's a little bit, what's the word I'm looking for? I mean, you're right, I mean, someone doesn't show up, crop doesn't come in, that makes total sense. I guess the question would be more like if it's habitual, like every, for a month straight now, there's only been two grocery, or two vendors that actually had fruits and vegetables and everything else was, say, you know, yeah, like, non, non-food. So, I mean, where it would become obvious that they're not living to the, to the spirit of the agreement. So I think those are, those are easy to, to be able to do without being very, you know, strict.
And you think our bias is going to be towards farming?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what we want to, and that's what we want to see. So I think there's room there and I, to, the council's idea here would be to give Cleve the ability as, as he works through negotiations, to have the ability to, to make those, you know, to, to be able to negotiate some of that stuff. Because it makes sense, like, we're not here to be punitive, we're not here to, you know, make sure you're in the parking lot by 3:01. But if there's consistent inconsistencies, then, you know, that's when we want to have that conversation or say, you know, what's going on? I think that's fair.
Well, and I think for the market then, you know, we give a goal. Then you said, you know, if you miss a week or whatever, but I think a majority of the people I talk to want to see mostly fruits and vegetables and foods, which I understand prepared foods aren't technically, you know, considered the certified market, but, you know, but saying 80%, we want, we want agriculture, we want food, that's what we want mostly at our, our farmer's market. So we don't want to walk down there and see 80% arts and craft fair. You know, I think that's just the point I'm trying to make and, and what I've heard from the public.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think similarly, I'm, I'm not saying a farmer didn't show up one week or, you know, but I do think, you know, I do think if we can get a list of vendors that would be there for the season, I mean, that is, I'm open to that as well. It seems like, you know, if you know who all your vendors would be for a season that you might have there, that would help us give us some oversight over kind of what sort of products and what's going to be sold.
Well, the old contract said they were supposed to supply the vendors and the business license and I looked through all those contracts and I never see that, saw that they submitted it once. So, you know, we have to do that follow-through, you know, and can't complain for, you know, 10 years they haven't done it when we haven't complained about it for 10 years, but, you know, we're going to be.
Problems on both sides.
Now that it comes to us, of course, we're going to be much more on top of it because it is brought to our attention.
Let's build a checklist and, and that's fine. And the thing is, Nicole, you also have to realize that you can't sell blueberries in August, there aren't any. And so if you have a blueberry vendor, they're not going to show up. And, and you can't, you can't, can't as a body be angry about that when there's no fruit to be had at that moment. That's why you have tomatoes late, blueberries early, cherries early. And so we can create a list of who the participants are and there may, might be reasons they don't show up in any one week, but again, it can't be punitive. We're going to choose to the, you know, we want to work with the solid people who show up every week and do a good job and build their own business. You know, people who don't show are unlikely to get invited back if they're recalcitrant.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're hearing, Mike, the sentiment for the most part is, we want it, as you've just mentioned too, is we want it to be farmer-focused and not maybe become an arts and crafts fair.
Sure. And, and if you guys want us to collect data for, you know, individual licenses and, and whatever the, the right things that we can mutually work out a checklist on, you know, I know, I know that we'll work on that. That's, you know, that's just blocking and tackling to get to where, what you want to get done.
Yep, no, that sounds good. Thank you, Mike. Okay, that was great, thank, and thank you for that, David. That was good, just to clear it up and, and have some, some insight, yes.
Just quickly, one of the things, Mike, that I wanted to mention, more my concern in, in actually writing this was to have someone show up on a week that, last minute that was not expected, that we didn't have a list, you know, and, and one of those that maybe, well, I'll, I'll just say it, the, the snow cone person, we have a debate whether or not that really is a, a fit, you know, and stuff. So that, that was more my concern, is having one show up that maybe was not listed. If you provide a big list and, and somebody doesn't show up, I'm not as concerned about the person that doesn't show up, it's the person that does show up that's not on the list, so. But we can work on that and figure out, you know, how we get, get through that.
You have to create entry points because in half way through a market, you may have people that either dropped out or you need to submit.
Sure.
So you have to, you just have to have the flexibility.
Yeah, and, and we can talk about that and like I say, you know, when you invite somebody new and you find out they're probably going to come, you know, laws are added to a list that we establish every once in a while, we're, we're good. So.
Yeah, and again, I think as we've said, you know, we want it to be farmer-focused. If it starts to become arts and craft, then we shouldn't call it a farmer's market, it's an arts and craft bizarre, not a, not a farmer's market. And I, I get it, like, there's going to be ancillary things and that's good because you can, you know, I've bought other stuff when I go to the farmer's market, not just fruits and vegetables. But we also don't want that to be the dominant thing. Then it, it really changes what we believe is what people are looking for and what we've heard from folks. So if we can work within those confines, I think we'll all find, you know, a happy place there. So with that, does anybody want to make an attempt at what a resolution would look like?
Our attempt.
All right. Thank you, Vice.
That we reaffirm the action that we took on February 28th to delegate the city manager to enter into a new agreement with Farm Trails for the farmer's market at the Mooney Lot for the 2023 year with some of the additions that we've talked about here, I think we've been a little bit more clear. Are we clear? Are you clear, Cleve? And if you're not, ask us now, because we're all here.
The only area that I would request if you wanted in there is, are you putting a number in there or are you just leaving it the way it is now in terms of market mix? If you're leaving it the way I put in here, as long as they follow the state guidelines for certified farmer's market, we're good.
Which is the 80% rule.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's.
State guidelines are the 80% rule.
I think that's fine.
Okay. That was my only question.
And I think, I'll, I'll just make a, a friendly amendment to, to that, which is the language that council used on allowing Cleve to have, to be able to do substantial, or you had a phrase that you used in terms of, within negotiations, I want to make sure Cleve has flexibility to get a contract done in a way that, that works.
Right, delegating authority to the city manager to make substantive changes to accomplish the purpose of effectuating this and allowing me to draft this agreement and making sure that we're complying in accordance with the law. But there's also another change in here that's substantive in nature, there's a one-year agreement with future yearly options. So I'd like direction on that.
I'm, I'm amenable to the future yearly options as long as we aren't, don't have complaints from the public and the businesses. As long as everything's being worked out and it's working, then I'm fine with that. And I, I'll amend my amendment to say everything she just said.
And we also need the notice of exemption as well.
Ah, yes, so we have to include the sequo exemption.
Yes, and that.
And the sequo exemption. Okay, I'm going to have to get my glasses back out. What number did we put that under?
It's not in there.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's within the resolution.
So if you're adopting the resolution, that should.
So adopt the resolution and.
Okay.
To adopt the resolution and recommendations of city councils.
Okay. So we move to adopt the resolution with all said previous changes here in wording?
Okay.
I think we're good.
We're good?
Okay.
My second.
All right, thank, thank you, David. We'll be first and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gopper?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Neal?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you everybody for, that stayed and everybody that came as well. I know it's a busy, people have busy lives, so I appreciate everybody that came out. Thank you for your participation. And as David said, please do come, we have budget upcoming, we have a lot of big things that are coming up.
Millions of dollars.
Yes, we, and we have, yes, so we appreciate that, yes, and we will take a 10-minute break. All right, thank you, everybody. And we will go ahead and continue. Now I got to find where my agenda, okay. So we are on item 12.2, which is to review the status report, the fiscal year 2223 Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence update being conducted by the Eldorado County Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO, for the city of Placerville and provide direction to staff. And Mr. Revos has this report for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let me start with a, a brief background. State law, which is Senate Bill 938, which is known as the Cortezi-Knox-Hertzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of 2000, requires the Eldorado Local Agency Formation Commission to conduct sphere of influence updates for all agencies under its jurisdiction by January 1st, 2008, and then every five years after that. State law also requires the completion of what's called a municipal service review or MSR prior to determining the city's sphere of influence. This update, the current one, involves completion of a review and update of the city of Placerville Municipal Services Review and Sphere of Influence Update, which was adopted on August 23rd of 2017. LAFCO will first complete a comprehensive review and update of the city's MSR involving a review of its municipal services that the city provides, and that would include the whole gamut, road maintenance, law enforcement, parks and recreation services, lighting and landscaping, drainage and flood control, water distribution, wastewater, fire suppression, and including an evaluation of the city's capital investment and improvement programs and finances as well. Following completion of the MSR update, LAFCO will then conduct a sphere of influence update, taking into consideration the city's growth rate and its ability to adequately consideration the city's growth rate and its ability to adequately serve those areas that are outside the city's corporate limits. LAFCO held a kickoff meeting, it was a virtual meeting, on December 14th of 2022 with city staff and representatives of Plan West Partners, Inc., that's the consulting firm that LAFCO has contracted with to conduct the study. The consulting firm conducted the MSR SOI update for LAFCO. The city departments, all our city departments, were provided a municipal services review questionnaire, which were completed and provided to Plan West. Copies of those completed questionnaires are provided in attachment A of the staff report. So hopefully you all had a chance to review those. The draft MSR SOI update is scheduled to be presented to the LAFCO commission at their May 24th, 2023 meeting, at which time the draft will become a public document and would be available for review and comment. The final document is tentatively scheduled for adoption on June 28th of 2023. Also attached are two areas that the city seeks to expand its sphere of influence, and I'll go over those once I complete my verbal staff report and we can review some of the maps that we submitted to LAFCO. These include the Smith Flat Area Sphere of Influence Expansion Area and the Missouri Flat Sphere of Influence Expansion Area. Those are attachments B and C respectively. The city and LAFCO staff will have the opportunity to review an administrative draft prior to the draft being presented to LAFCO by Plan West. So that'll be the opportunity for us to review, provide any last comments before it becomes a public document. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and have Dave, Mr. Warren, put up the various maps, and I'll give some commentary on these maps. And staff apologized for maybe difficulty in actually seeing the roads or different things on the maps. I'll try and point out where, what exactly we're looking at, but so I have a laser pointer here. So what we're looking at is a map that staff prepared of the 95667 zip code area. So this is an aspirational map. Maybe this is how the city of Placerville envisions itself. And every time we have our public hearings, like we heard the last public hearing, we had a number of residents that state that they consider themselves to be a resident of Placerville because they have the 95667 area code, which is Placerville according to the U.S. Postal Service. So you can see Placerville, actually, the city limits is right here, and then here's the 95667 corporate limits. So just to give you some perspective of where we are in the map, this is Coloma, right up here. So 95667 goes just up to the south end of Coloma. This is Jayhawk, right up here, and there's Rescue, right in here. So butts up against Rescue. And then we come down, of course, this area right in here is Diamond Springs, which has its own area code, its own, I mean, yeah, area zip code and post office. And then moving on down south, goes into these hinterlands. Here's Somerset, right here. Pleasant Valley is also right here in this area. And then we move up to Sierra Springs. So it butts up right against the west boundary of Sierra Springs. And then up here, this is Camino. It goes all the way up and encompasses that Camino Commercial Center, which includes some of those wineries we see up there, the Chevron Station, that area is also 95667. Then it stops just on the east of that commercial center. And then we go up here, and it takes in, takes in Kelsey, takes in Finn and Lake, takes in Mosquito, Swansboro, goes even all the way up to Smith Flat. But then it takes in, it goes as far north as Slate Canyon along Rocky Ridge that heads up, heads up in the north area. So, so again, I think this is, we did not submit this map to LAFCO. I think it would have maybe stirred a little controversy, but this is just between us here that this is, this is what a lot of us would like to see Placerville
How far west on 50? Where is the terminus on 50 about?
Yeah, the terminus on 50 is right at that Camino Commercial Center, so
No, no, I mean, I'm sorry, the western side.
Oh, the western side.
Western edge on 50.
The western edge, let's see, it looks like it stops right there. It goes quite a ways past Perks Corner, but it stops probably a few miles
Do we have the casino? Would the casino be in the city?
I believe it is.
I believe the casino is in the city.
Who had a 95667.
So if we were to annex this whole area, we would take in the casino.
Oh, well, there you go, right there.
Oh, and I forgot to mention then that the south boundary here, this is the middle fork of the Consumnis, this jagged area here. Not much out there.
Pierre, do you know the population of all of what is considered 95667?
I do not, and that was something that the city manager and myself spoke about, and I just didn't have time to get that information. But, you know, maybe at a future meeting, we'll have that information for you. It'd be interesting to know what that is.
My understanding is over 30,000 people in that, you know, so going from 11,000, almost triple the size of the actual city of Placerville.
Who's the folks that used to do the business surveys, you know, the sales tax surveys? Buxton?
Oh, well, Buxton and HDL does our
Right, but they used to do like a zone around the city that was X miles, that would be small, that would live inside of that. And that was like 29,000 people, I think. So that's well over 30.
I just wanted to mention, one of the things that, when I first saw this, and one of the things I've looked at from time to time, if you ever drive up I-80 towards Truckee, notice how far outside of Truckee their city limit sign appears. It is miles and miles outside of their actual, yeah. So anyway, just interesting comment, some cities do that basically to protect their boundaries. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would just add, that was another discussion that, you know, that I had with the city manager, because I've noticed that too, coming in from Sierra Valley. I used to go up there quite a bit and drive in, and you'd see this sign, Truckee City Limits, a few miles before you even came to the city of Truckee. And there's a number of cities that have done that. I'm not really sure that that's something that can be done now. I bet that predates the Cortezi-Knox bill of legislation of 2000. So, but anyways, it is interesting. So maybe we can stick a sign out there and just see what kind of reaction we get. So if there's no more questions on the zip code, we'll go to the next map. The next map. Okay, so this is, this map is just a good picture of the city's corporate limits, which is the dark green. And then the yellow areas are the city's sphere of, current sphere of influence. So those are the areas where the city anticipates future growth and would be able to provide a high level of municipal services for these, for these areas, both developed and undeveloped. This map was not submitted to LAFCO. They have this one. The next map, we did send this over with our information to LAFCO. This is a map of the city's island annexations. This is back, I think this goes back to 2011, 2012, when the city was looking at annexing these so-called, I would call them like the county islands. They're almost wholly within the city, at least three sides. Access is only through the city to serve these areas. I can still remember first coming on board with the city of Placerville. I was dealing with a lot of these residents, you know, basically either asking questions or maybe complaining about certain things, and yet they weren't a city resident. They were in these, in these county pockets. And so the city did attempt to annex these. So we went ahead and revived this map, made a copy, sent it over to LAFCO so they can consider. These would be some of the areas that I think the city would be more interested in pursuing in annexation in the near future. The Placerville Economic Advisory Committee has a, has a annexation subcommittee, and so they've been tasked with reviewing and giving recommendation to city staff and the city council regarding prioritizing some of these areas. So we hope to be meeting with that subcommittee and then create some documents to better prioritize which ones we should really go after versus some that we could push off for a later date. But all of these county islands are currently within the city's sphere of influence. So moving on to the next map. So this map is, is what we call the proposed Vessini annexation. So the Vessinis own this area right in here. So you can see where the red line is. The dark line, the dark line is the city's current sphere of influence. You can see how it comes way in and then goes, goes way out. So the Vessinis own, of course, they have Placerville Drive is right along here. And then they're looking at annexing, I think there's, I think there's three parcels in here that are looking at annexing this area. So they're very interested. So LAFCO is interested in knowing what are some of the larger areas where it looks like annexation could occur in the recent, in the, in the near future. So this is one of them. In fact, we're supposed to be scheduling a meeting between the Vessini staff and LAFCO to look at how to deal with this. There's a provision that when the city is proposing an annexation, if there's a DUC, and that's DUC, it's a, it's a disadvantaged, unincorporated community, which is this area right in here, which is along Debbie Lane. Those of you know where Debbie Lane is, it comes off of Green Valley Road. This is identified as a duck. So if the Vessinis were to propose annexation on this, the city would also need to attempt to include this, this duck area right in here. So moving on to the next map. So this is another map that we did provide to LAFCO. This is the, a draft Smith Flat Area Sphere of Influence Expansion. So the current, you can see the, the dark line here is the city's current corporate limits. This hashed area here is the city's sphere of influence. This is the whole Smith Flat area. This is that famous Jakeway Road that was mentioned by council earlier. So we've been working with some of the property owners here. So I just want to let the council know that I'm going to revise this map and resubmit it to LAFCO since there is now a question on this property being included and a question on this property being included. This is the Fenton Harriet Winery. It was only a couple of years ago that they were very interested in being annexed, but now I think the winery is for sale and there's some issues with it. So now we're not sure. But these property, the owners of these properties here, the Starfield Winery, are interested in annexing. This is the 24-carat farm right in here in these properties, and they're interested in, in being annexed, as is this piece right here. So we will revise this map, removing this and removing this for now until we get, until we get verification that they are interested.
Pierre, is that, is that top one, is that also a winery, that one that's in question up there?
This is not. I think this is just vacant property.
Vacant land.
And this is Carson Road right in here. So this is where Jakeway goes up and then turns and connects right about in here with Carson Road. Gives you a perspective of where it is. But unfortunately, we were trying to get information on some of these other properties, because I think some of these other ones may also be interested. And again, this wouldn't be for annexation, but it would be for an expansion of the city's sphere of influence. So the best for last. So this map is what we call the draft, the draft Missouri Flat Road Sphere of Influence and Expansion. So we can see this is Highway 50 right through here. This is Missouri, Missouri Flat Road right here that goes on through. So here's Highway 50, Missouri Flat. So right here, this is the edge, you can see the hashed area, that's the edge of the city's sphere of influence. The Weber Creek provides the boundary for the most part. So what we're proposing, at least for, at least to get some response from LAFCO regarding this annexation, would be to include, we would move the boundary to Forney Road, which is right here. Comes all the way down to where it connects with Missouri Flat Road. We would take in then one parcel deep along Missouri Flat Road until we get to Highway 50, and then we take in the pond area. This is the Seventh Day Adventist. And then we take in that area along Missouri Flat Road, then on the north side, which includes a Safeway Shopping Center, Prospectors Plaza, and the crossings. And then this area, some of this property here is undeveloped. That's what lies in here. So this is, this is aspirational, but we want to see what, you know, the city feels that it could provide a higher level of services such as roads and police protection in this area. So we did submit this map to LAFCO for And this is the final, the last of the map exhibits that we submitted to LAFCO. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And I just want to say, this is mainly an effort of, of other city departments, such as engineering, public works, police. Those are the departments that provide for services, where development services is really just facilitating the process with LAFCO. But you have all the responses from the respective departments that provide for services there for you to provide, to review and provide any additional comment. And that concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Any questions at this point? I did have one just for David. Do you have one?
No, no, no. No, this is just a comment for John. So, yeah, so 173 square miles and 36,726 residents.
In the, in the
In the zip code of 95667.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a healthy city. That would be a healthy city. We could do some things.
We could do some stuff. So on the, on the sphere, yeah, that was actually, I knew it was over 30, but that's good to know, the exact number. Basically, three times our city, as we are today, more than three times. In terms of the actually, if the city wanted to go forward with an actual annexation of an area besides just increasing the sphere of influence, is that process at any point, or is it only when we come up for the review at LAFCO? Is there like just periods of time where this could happen? Or is it, you know, a year from now, just, you know, for whatever reason, the weather looks right for us to be able to do that, the economics, what have you? Could we move forward with, with a plan to LAFCO at that point? Or how does that work in that sense?
So typically, typically when a, when a jurisdiction has its sphere of influence, for the most part, it is driven by the individual property owner who desires to develop their property. So I think I provided you our general plan, goals, objectives, and policies that pertain to annexations. And then I also, in the staff report, included some of the goals of LAFCO. And you could see how our general plan, our goals, you know, align with that of LAFCO. And it's, you know, basically, can we provide a higher level of service of municipal services to these areas? So typically, so to get more to your point, typically what happens is when you're in the sphere of influence, they're underserved. And so they want to develop their property, they want to hook up to city water, city sewer. That, that would be a requirement of development, then, that they would then apply for annexation in the city along with other entitlements. And so we work with the county on that. And then the actual annexation process would be required to be approved by LAFCO. So in this case, in some of these maps, the city is looking at asking LAFCO to analyze our ability to provide for municipal services into the future. And again, typically, you're looking at a five to 10-year planning time horizon, you know, unlike the city of Truckee, when that sign that's way out, you know, 10 miles out of town, I'm sure that's a 50-year or more planning time out of town, I'm sure that's a 50-year or more planning time horizon. But I think it's tighter typically is what Lafco looks at now, so five to 10 years of growth. But a lot of these areas grew, like those of us who've been here for a number of decades now, now there was very little out there on Missouri Flat. And look what's happened. And a lot of times, the municipality will push its sphere of influence out such that you don't have the other, you know, the county jurisdiction essentially coming right up to your corporate boundaries and then cannibalizing land use and fiscalizing land use. And that's typical. That happens all throughout the state of California.
Understood. Thank you. David, do you have a?
So, basically, with the SOI, we're basically examining what we can provide for them better than the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Typically, you're looking at, yes.
City water, police response time.
Exactly.
Fire, first responders. Okay.
Yeah, just in general, a county is more of a rural service provider where a city has a higher level of municipal services. That's typically, in theory, the way it's supposed to work.
So, basically, once we can get them into sphere of influence, if we can do that through Lafco, then if the property owner wants to annex, then they apply?
So, Lafco's, part of Lafco's responsibilities is to conduct municipal service reviews for all local agencies within its sphere. So, it's doing it for water districts, special districts, cities, counties, everyone. And part of their charge is to determine whether the locality is basically the best public agency effectuating the charges that it's supposed to be doing. Now is a good time to determine whether the city is well-positioned, for example, to effectuate expanding its jurisdiction outside of its sphere of influence, but it's not the only time. So, as the property owner, you can annex or you can apply for annexation to Lafco whenever you think it's appropriate. There's a series of steps, right? So, once you submit your application for annexation to Lafco, Lafco looks at your MSR to see if you're even capable of doing it. There's a voting that goes to it. And then you have to enter into what's called a tax sharing agreement with the county. So, it's not even just up to the city. The county, bless you, has to also agree whether it's a set period of time, for example, 10, 15, 20 years or in perpetuity, where the county says, this area, this geographic area that you want to now put back into your city, we're getting tax dollars for it. So, for how long are you going to give us that share of revenue back to us so that we are made whole? And sometimes, cities never incorporate, or never can incorporate that area because there's not agreement on the tax sharing. So, that's a critical component of incorporation or of annexation. Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think that's always been the case with Missouri Flat, is coming up, you know, coming to some kind of agreement on a tax sharing, you know, for that area. It would be, it would be a lot to work through.
Right. And it's a sliding, it's a sliding thing because right now, you know, you have Area A, county's got it, it's in our sphere of influence. We decide to annex it. They're providing services, so they have all the services and the taxes. But over time, their level of responsibility would ramp down, yours ramps up. So, basically, it's a, it's like a formula. In some respects, Lafco almost acts like an escrow outfit because they take the two parties into the same space and then they do the negotiation back and forth. It's more difficult because there were some changes to the annexation laws or something not too many years ago. It's made a little bit more challenging. But cities consume counties. That's kind of what happens. So, you're not, you know, there's some precedent to doing this. It's easier to do it if the land is vacant because then nobody cares. Annexing, but you know, we've been fiddling, farting around with Missouri Flat Road for 40, I mean, forever, you know? And we, yes, that's the technical term for it. And the city needs to be, I personally believe the city needs to be more bold on some of these discussions. Because even in Smith Flat, I mean, I've been around a long time, and, oh, Smith Flat, well, you know, I don't know. And everybody kind of waffles and then, and nobody wants to put up, I mean, it's not comfortable. You have to deal with other governments and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Yeah. But we can't be timid anymore. We've got to make the city bigger and this is how you do it. This is the process. And this is the beginning of it.
I mean, budget alone, we're going to need to do that. I mean, costs go up and the city stays the same size, guess what?
Oh, yeah. No, we are, we are in a challenged, we're okay for now, but now is getting weird. And so, and so, yeah, we just need to be willing to have those discussions and push it out there. And then what you do is you go convince the people that are on those, in those boundary zones, they would be better off. Because eventually, that's what you're going to do. You're going to go to those people and you say, you'll, things won't get worse. Most people have these weird notions, like it costs more in your property taxes or something if all of a sudden you became part. Well, they do. They believe that, you know? And so, you have to, there's a lot of outreach you have to do to make this happen. But it takes a lot of effort and money. Because the other thing too is when you get into actually doing the annexations, then you start getting into SEQA and stuff, and that can become very costly. And that's usually what stops most jurisdictions from going ahead.
It's not worth the.
It's not, yeah. What is it? The squeeze is not worth the juice.
Yeah.
It's the saying. Yeah. Otherwise, this is fine.
Yeah, because that's my, and to John's point, undeveloped land, because if you have a developer that's interested in doing something, they will, a lot of times, the cost will be borne on the developer as you move forward in an area. In this case, as we're looking at developed property, it's a little bit of a different animal. And so, cost of those things may be more, may be borne more on the city itself.
But the one thing that the city has an advantage in, A, is it provides a better service, PD being one of them, law enforcement would be one of those, where you could go to these areas around the city and say, hey, listen, you'll get PD. PD provides, I mean, it's no dig at the sheriff. I mean, it's just, it's an issue of geography. We provide a better service. And for some folks, that'll be an important thing, more than most. And then we have to convince them that they won't have to necessarily go on our sewer system because then that scares the heck out of everybody because it's expensive. But that's a different discussion. So, there's a lot of things you got to talk to folks about. There's no action on this? I believe it's on. Do we give any direction?
The only thing, the only action is if you want to change anything that we've done. If you're happy with the way we've done it, fine. If you want to change things and go to the 95667 area code, we can submit that map for you.
I don't think so, but we could.
Do you think those people that are looking at ads, the real estate ads, and it says, and it ends up in Swansboro, but it's the Placerville postmark, and they're like going, this is like in another country almost up here? I've always thought that was a bait and switch.
That's true. I'm going to go ahead and open up this item for public comment. All right. Seeing no takers, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Does anybody have any changes they'd like staff to consider on what's been proposed to us? All right. Go forth and conquer.
Yes.
So, go ahead and submit the zip code map?
Yes.
I think that should be on the top of the package.
Accidentally have it in there.
No, I'm sorry. That was, I'm sorry. We were drinking and that got in there. Sorry.
We get a lot of supervisors' attention.
No, you don't.
All right.
One or two, yeah.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Pierre. We appreciate that. It's a good learning experience, I think, for all of us that haven't been through a Lafco process in the past. So, appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item 12.3, and that is to consider a possible approval of advertising plans, specification, and contract documents for bidding for the construction of the Hawking Street Sewer Line Replacement Project. And Ms. Neves has this for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a request for your consideration to allow staff to advertise the plans, specs, and contract documents in accordance with Public Contract Code for the construction of the Hawking Street Sewer Line Replacement Project. This project is located near Ferrari Court and provides sewer services to 17 homes located on Hawking Street through a public sewer main located within an easement in the backyards of these homes. The pipe is approaching 70 years of service, consisting of degrading materials, including transite and orangeberg, and has had several segments fail and is an ongoing maintenance issue for our Public Works Department. The project proposes to replace and upsize the existing four-inch pipe to a six-inch pipe utilizing trenchless construction, or more commonly known as pipe bursting. Pipe bursting is initiated by excavating a bore pit at the outlet and installing a hydraulic or pneumatic expansion head on the new pipe that is then pulled through the existing pipe using a cable or winch. The existing pipe is opened and forced outward utilizing a bursting tool that will allow the new pipe to be installed right in its place. City Council awarded a consultant agreement with Duberry Engineers to prepare preliminary scoping report, which was then received and filed at the November 9, 2022, meeting. This project was also found to be SEQA categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the SEQA guidelines, and a notice of exemption was filed with the county recorder's office in November as well. The design is now complete and the project is ready to be advertised. If approved, staff intends to release this project for public bidding tomorrow with a scheduled bid opening of May 18. Staff will then return with a recommendation for construction contract at the June 13, 2023, meeting for council's consideration. That concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and a member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. This has been on our radar for quite some time. This is one of those horrible orangeberg pipe sections that we have hoped to get rid of as much of it as possible for our city. It's a disaster waiting to happen. It's one of the places where you get a lot of inflow that overwhelms our water treatment plant. And so, the more orangeberg we can get rid of, the better off we are. And to do this trenchless, it looks like the very best option we could ask for. So, yay, team.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. First and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. All right. Moving to item 12.4, which is approval of a resolution, a resolution declaring the existence of an emergency and need to address an immediate and imminent threat to public health and safety through repair of an existing 48-inch storm drain located within Forney Road and approval of SEQA notice of exemption. And again, Rebecca has this report for us.
Good evening again. The item before you declares and addresses the immediate and imminent threat to public health, safety, and property for sinkhole that has developed in Forney Road. Please bear with me on this item because since publication of the agenda in the staff report, there's been some new information and some changes in the approach, but I want to step you through those, including some additional coordination with Caltrans. It is a favorable situation. So, I'll cover that more in detail in just a moment. Last month, staff was notified by Thompson's Dodge that the street had begun to depress in the two-way turn lane, indicating a subsurface failure and potential development of a sinkhole. On March 20, the city public works staff addressed the site's safety immediately by plating the area to allow for further investigation of the potential cause, site assessment, and ownership of the failing infrastructure. Following that information, city staff had the area CCTV inspected and determined that a culvert that was constructed in 1961 with Highway 50, consisting of a 48-inch corrugated metal pipe, had deteriorated at the invert flow channel of the pipe, and a segment of the pipe was actually failing and capsizing in on itself and may need to be replaced through the project. On April 17, however, staff was then notified that an open hole had surfaced at the plates. Staff inspected and found that the area beneath the plates had completely failed, the road surface and the subgrade, and leaving a very large void that then escalated the severity, and there is now insufficient time to undergo a public bidding process. Public Contract Code does allow for agencies to make findings in emergency situations, which is part of the action before you this evening. This item was escalated due to the field conditions and is considered an emergency since there's an active threat to life and property due to this sinkhole. Staff contacted Caltrans and notified them of the issue, identified ownership of the infrastructure, and pressed on to prepare the staff report and resolution with this evening's agenda to get the issue addressed and site secured, keeping public health and safety as the number one goal. Since that date, this staff report was published, there was an offer by Caltrans to replace the segment of the failed culvert, which is located within the city right-of-way, and complete invert paving on the rest of the culvert beneath Highway 50. Caltrans requested that the city cover the costs associated with traffic control and intersection paving of Forney Road for the work. Caltrans accepts the ownership of the portion of the culvert within the city right-of-way and feels that the structural repair of the invert paving will address the culvert adequately, and no pipelining is necessary at this time, thus eliminating the need for the emergency contract with NorCal Pipeline. The $85,000 in contract work with Doug Veerkamp General Engineering will address the traffic control, paving, and all work will be tracked under a time and material basis. The contingency value was reduced to $25,000 to be in alignment with the city manager's signatory authority, and construction inspections will remain at $10,000, which totals $120,000. The item before you this evening is therefore revised in resolution and form to strike out all references to NorCal Pipeline, approves the SEQA exemption pursuant to Guideline Section 15629 for emergency work, approves a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp General Engineering in the amount of $85,000, and approves a revised budget appropriation from $325,000 down to $120,000. We certainly like it when it goes the other way. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Rebecca, you have to always come to us with staff reports like this.
Yes.
No, that's.
No promises.
Yeah. No, that's obviously phenomenal news.
Yes.
For, yes. That's just great. And I have to say, Cleve showed me the pictures of the, the thing that I can't believe is that Caltrans walked through that. Like, nothing could fall in, there's cars, you know, there's Highway 50 going over you.
They didn't. Somebody a little more local did, and did a great job as a tour guide, I might add. I'm going to add it to his list of qualifications as a contractor.
Oh, my God. Because that's, that seems wildly dangerous, but.
It was, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Is there any questions? All right. I will go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Wow. Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. This will save us some Measure L money. And willing to crawl in that hole. I saw, Rebecca showed me the pictures where you could look down into that thing, and I thought, wow, that looks like a cave. We can get this done for, and Caltrans is actually going to take some of the responsibility? That's wonderful. Good for us.
Thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I can't just do my standard move staff recommendation because it actually doesn't apply anymore. We still need to do the emergency thing, right? Or do we? We do that. Okay, I would still like to do the state of emergency to, we should do that.
So, this is a special resolution.
Special resolution, number, yeah.
Right. So, this needs to pass by a fourth of its vote. So, we do need to take roll call.
Right.
And we do need approval of the resolution as amendment. There's two amendments. We're striking the NorCal references from all of it.
Okay.
And the approval, the total budget approval is for $120,000, and you're also approving the notice of exemption. So, you can approve the resolution with the amendments that I've just read into the record.
Yes. That's what I'm moving. I am moving what the lawyer said. Is that good enough?
Do we have a second?
A second? Well, what do you mean? That works. That works. I could repeat it, but it would sound stupid when I said it. It's a lawyer. She sounds smart.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor No?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
All right. Tremendous work. And I do have to say, we do have such a, we have a really good working relationship with Caltrans. And I think, you know, that goes a long ways in a situation where we just came before us. If we had a really adversarial one, we might not be in that same position. So, thank you for that as well.
To add on to that, I was in an event a couple of weeks ago and, oh, the D3 guy, I forget his name now, Amerji was there. And boy, he had nothing but praise, nothing but praise. So, that, you're absolutely right. That relationship is invaluable and that we get like this. It works real well.
Thank you. All right. Item 12.5, consideration and approval of professional service agreement with Acorn Environmental for the preparation of a mitigated negative deck declaration in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act for the general plan amendment and rezoning of three sites, 2752 Coloma Street, 201 New Morning Court, and 7460 and 7444 Green Valley Road, to add the housing opportunity overlay, land use designation, and zone districts. And Mr. Revos has the report for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start with some background because this effort goes back quite a ways. We'll start with Cycle 5 Housing Element. That's your 2013, 2021 housing element that was first adopted in February 11th of 2014, and then was adopted again. It was revised and re-adopted on October 25th of 2016, and that was due to the fact that HCD found that the city Cycle 5 element was not in compliance with state housing law because it lacked an adequate inventory of lands at a density deemed suitable for affordable housing. So the updated housing element adopted in 2016 added 11 sites that included the three sites that is the subject of this consultant services agreement that would be evaluated under the subject consultant services agreement to provide for environmental services pursuant to SEQA. On October the 22nd of 2019, and then again on November 12th of 2019, the city council adopted a resolution that authorized the application for and the receipt of Senate Bill 2 Planning Grant Program Funds. So these are the funds that are funding this effort through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Planning grant funds are intended to facilitate the acceleration of housing production. The program allocates funds based on population, and the city of Plaserville received the maximum award of $160,000 with no match requirement. The standard agreement with HCD was signed on March 5th of 2020. In 2020, during the Cycle 5 Housing Element planning period, the city obtained and initiated a Senate Bill 2 granting funding for consultant services to, one, conduct environmental analysis in accordance with SEQA on the three sites, on these three sites targeted for high-density residential development, and then, two, use what's called a local early action planning or LEAP grant funding for the development of objective design standards for attached single-family and multifamily dwellings. The city will complete the implementation of Senate Bill 2 and LEAP-funded activities during the current housing element planning period, which is Cycle 6. The council then later adopted the Cycle 6 Housing Element on December 13th of 2022. So the Cycle 6 Housing Element contained Program A3, which is a carryover from the previous housing element, which included the three sites, Site 1, 2, and 3, the one being on Coloma Street, the property on New Morning Court, and then the two adjoining properties on Green Valley Road.
Pierre, I'm going to interrupt you real fast.
Sure.
Just because I just reckon, actually, and John pointed it out, even though I knew this because I looked at it, so 2752 Coloma Street, I bet 2895 Coloma Streets, I'm just basically down the block from it, so do I need to recuse myself on this one then?
You do. You have a real property interest, you should step down from the dais. Thank you for disclosing that.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you, John, for catching that because I looked at it, but...
This is your chance, Jackie.
Yeah, okay. We'll wait for Michael to leave.
Take a water.
And then if we can just have the city clerk note that for the record, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pierre. We continue, please.
Sure. So proposals were received from four environmental consulting firms qualified to do this type of work, and we received those from Acorn Environmental, Ascent Environmental, ESA, and Precision. Staff reviewed the proposals and determined that Acorn Environmental, which is located, their offices in Eldorado Hills, presented a superior project understanding and approach, and was therefore most qualified and responsive to the city's request for preparation of initial study and environmental documents for the project. Acorn's scope of work, schedule, and cost estimate are included as exhibits and are attached to the staff report and the, or actually, they're attached to the agreement. The agreement calls for preparing an initial study and a review of direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts with the development of the three sites for the preparation of environmental documents for each of the three sites. Also to be included are specific impact evaluations for aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, land use planning, noise, traffic, and wildfire risk. Acorn proposes to complete this work within a budget of $99,708. A related grant to this effort, as I mentioned earlier, is the LEAP funding, which stands for Local Early Action Planning for Housing Production, in the amount of $65,000. The council did authorize staff on February of 2021 to apply for and utilize these funds to obtain consulting services to develop multifamily residential objective design standards consistent with the ministerial approval requirements under Senate Bill 35, which is the streamlining provisions to create ministerial approval process for affordable housing projects. The standard agreement with HCD for the LEAP funding was executed on March 4th of 2021. And lastly, staff did provide the council with a revised resolution for you to adopt, if you wish. The revision added and approving a $160,000 SB2 planning grant for said agreement, and this is at the end of the resolution title, and then we also added an item number two at the bottom, approve a $160,000 budget appropriation and SB2 planning grant for said agreement, and that's at the bottom. So it doesn't change materially anything about the resolution. It just clarifies the amount of money in the grant. The only, the last thing I want to add before I conclude my staff's report, because we did receive concern about, ooh, we're changing things on these three sites. Actually, that's not really the case. This agreement is consistent with prior council approvals, both in the housing element and in the application for and receiving these grants to do an environmental evaluation and to have objective design standards prepared for these three sites. Once that is done, then staff will pursue a more formal general plan amendment and rezone of these properties to add the housing opportunity overlay. So that process would go to the planning commission first, and then the planning commission would make a recommendation that would come before this council for your final approval to add the housing opportunity overlay, and you'll have the information then of a SEQA document to evaluate any potential impacts should these properties be developed at a high-density residential. So one of the sites, and I think it's in the staff report, is R2, which is multifamily residential. The other two are commercial. And so if you recall in the past, what the city kept having was pushback from the property owner when we tried to attempt to add a R5, which was a very high-density affordable, not affordable, just a high-density residential development. The property owner would push back, saying, well, there's no market for that, and they were challenging the city with inverse condemnation. So we then devised this housing opportunity overlay zone, which goes on top of the base zone district, so it preserves the property owner's current zoning should they wish to develop at that current zoning, but it allows an opportunity should the property owner decide to sell or be interested in developing a high-density residential, it would only apply to an affordable housing project. So I wanted to conclude with that, that this is only for the, to approve the agreement for professional consulting services for environmental review. That concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Do we have any questions from the council? David?
Yeah, just real quick, because going through this has a whole bunch of different things that they're going to be doing, hazardous materials, hydrology, water color, traffic. So all of this is being included in the report, so, okay, and I do see traffic in there. Okay, that was a question I had because I didn't hear anything about traffic. So, traffic impact, okay, I answered my own question. Thanks, Pierre.
Sure, and if it makes the council feel any more and more comfortable, staff is very familiar with these sites, and we're not, we don't anticipate hazardous chemicals on the site, not like any of these had a gas station with leaky tanks or that kind of thing. But in the initial study phase, we do examine it. Is there a potential? But I don't think there'll be any involved, you never know, but as part of the initial study review process, we'll make sure that there isn't any serious concerns with these sites.
Okay. Thank you. We'll open this for public comment.
Plaserville is always short on housing, and especially on affordable housing. So, and I'd like to congratulate city staff on being able to go for grants. Grants always save us money and give us abilities to do things that maybe we couldn't afford to do otherwise. So, good for you guys.
Thank you, Sue.
Ryan Carter, City of Plaserville. A couple of quick questions I was hoping I could get an answer for. So each of these individual properties has a list that they are, that they're anticipated to accommodate a certain number of units. Coloma Street, for example, 67 units, 56 on New Morning. So where do these numbers come from? Have there been actual development plans submitted? And if not, where does these specific numbers come from on these courts? My second question, so traffic is specifically excluded from this SEQA. And if you look at the scope of work for Acorn Environmental, page 11, it says that the traffic impact is not going to be significant, and thus, it's anticipated that the level of service will not be required. So anyway, they're specifically exempting traffic from this SEQA study. I have a huge problem with that. We're talking about almost 200 new families, new units, with, you know, commensurate traffic from those 200 new families. I'm assuming it's because the state allows us to exempt it through this SEQA designation. Even if the state doesn't want it, I think we should do it. I think we should require, as a amendment to this scope of work, that they do a traffic study to find out what the impacts for these neighborhoods are going to be from all these new families. That's my main problem with this. Let's see, there was another question I had. I apologize. I didn't write it down. The grants, I'm going to disagree with Sue. I've been notoriously reticent of grant money because grant money comes with strings attached, a million strings for every dollar that you get, and this SP2 funding, the LEAP funding, it's very dangerous. I'd recommend, at all times going forward, that we examine the cost, the true cost to our community of this grant funding, and don't just accept this money from the state without understanding what it's going to cost us long-term. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Kirk Smith to follow up on the same points. There's nothing mentioned about highways and roads, and that doesn't make sense. On one hand, you want to have this study look at hazardous materials or hazardous sites or impact on the environment, like a buried gasoline tank, and you say that's minimal and you're not likely to find it, but you ask them to look for that. And yet somehow, you already exclude road traffic, and that doesn't make sense because we're going to later have TIM fees and things like that, the impact on our roads, we need to look at that. That just doesn't make sense. The second concern is you haven't mentioned who owns these properties. That should be disclosed, to know who owns the developments that you're offering. I think it needs to be done in the name of full disclosure. And I'll tell you, just to let you know why I'm particularly excited. You saw on the records request, I asked for something on February 23rd, one month ago, for all materials related to the subject you had earlier, and then in the midst of the discussion, one letter comes that I asked for one month ago, and that's not a policy of being open. We need as a public to be informed, and that's concerning. That's well past the 10 days for disclosure. And I think that there's no explanation we've heard as to why you're exempting highways when that impact can be substantial. Why do you assume it's not going to be, and then you're going ahead and look at environment and air and all that kind of stuff, even though you don't think it's going to be a problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Seeing no more people in the audience, we'll close public comment and bring it back. Pierre, do you have some answers for some of those questions?
I guess the one response I would have is, that's why we would conduct an initial study, is because we don't know. I can't tell you whether there's hazardous materials on the site or not. We would, that's part of the initial study. So that was one question. As far as disclosure, there was a question regarding disclosure. Well, these properties were contained in our previous Cycle 5 Housing Element, and they were also contained in our Cycle 6 Housing Element, and those were fully vetted and went through numerous hearings, so I don't know if there's a requirement to disclose at this juncture the property owner on those properties for conducting an environmental analysis for a potential application of a housing opportunity overlay that will occur at a future date. So, staff anyways, unless the city attorney sees different, I don't see any issue there. As far as traffic, we will look at traffic, but there was some changes in state law now where it's now, we're not looking at level of service anymore, and so the location of these should provide for very minimal impact on traffic because the traffic calculation is now not based on level of service, it's based on the, the, oh, what's it called?
VMT.
Yeah, vehicle miles traveled instead, which is a very significantly different level of impact than a level of service, which is the way SEQA used to evaluate traffic impacts.
Great. Thank you so much, Pierre.
And actually, could you answer, one, the other question too is the number of units per parcel. I'm assuming that's just size of the parcel times the zoning.
Yes, and...
And it's the maximum. It's like, if you have up to 20 per acre and you have two acres, that's 40. Is that kind of how that works?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. That was a good question, too. And so, again, I think we had, staff had to demonstrate to HCD that our housing element provided an adequate number of units for these sites. So in other words, a jurisdiction can't pick some, you know, 30% slope just on the edge of the city limits with no water and sewer. So these are sites that are readily available to be developed with city services. They're not undevelopable, and so we calculated what's called an achievable density, and so we had to prove that to HCD, that we're not picking sites that can't be developed but that could potentially be developed for this. So, no, there is no development proposal out there, there's nothing available, no applications submitted. It's to get us a rezoning effort. So the closest we'll get to actually having a project on that site will be, hopefully we'll be able to secure a contract with an architect that'll do a preliminary site plan and do elevations of the proposed buildings. And so that'll go through the hearing process as well. So, but that earlier question that, is there a proposal submitted? No, we're not, we're not there yet.
Yeah. And VMT in a town like Plaserville, especially if you're building it near the main roads, VMT's numbers are fantastic, actually. They're the opposite of LOS almost. Doesn't make any sense, I'm not arguing that it's better or worse, but quite honestly, in the analysis for these kinds of projects, VMT, these are very favorable kinds of projects when it comes to vehicle miles traveled. At least that's been my experience.
No, I appreciate that comment. It was basically what, these sites were chosen due to their proximity to employment, to services, shopping, the whole gamut, there's, except for the one on Coloma, I believe they're all readily accessible, but the one on Coloma, you could walk to town, but they're readily, they can transit and everything. So they're where you want to put higher density. So they're where you want to put higher density. It's not out in the hikerlands.
They check the boxes, as it were.
Check the boxes, yes.
Thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
Any more comments, discussion from council? Questions? No? Okay. Cleve?
I'm going to raise, raise a question based on Ryan's comment, too. Pierre, it, it does seem to indicate in here that they're not going to study traffic. Is that not correct? The reference that Mr. Carter, Ryan, sorry, made, made, and simply states that pursuant to technical advisory on evaluating transportation impacts in SEQA, evidence supports presumption of less than significant impact for a 100% affordable residential development in infill locations. It is anticipated that qualitative analysis of VMT or level of service will not be required based on this guidance. So will they be looking at traffic at all based on that?
Well, the initial study will confirm that statement you just made.
Okay. Or it will say there was an initial study that needs to be done.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Cleve. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. I'll move to adopt per the staff report.
Go ahead. Wait a second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nell?
Aye.
And Mayor Saragosa has recused himself from this item. Thank you.
Okay. Can someone grab the mayor, please?
I got it. I'm going to go wake him up.
All right. Thank you. Actually got a chance to catch up on CHP Placerville's social media account, which is amazing. You have to look at their most recent post about a vehicle that was abandoned. It was, it's great, actually.
It's like a white truck?
Yes. It's, it's awesome. All right. So item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. We'll start with the transit authority.
We need to meet.
All right. Transportation?
We meet May 4th.
Yeah. LAFCO?
We meet May 24th.
All right. SECOG, we did meet. We're doing these rotating meetings now where we're trying to meet in jurisdictions, other jurisdictions areas. So we all get to know our colleagues a little bit better. So we were in Roseville last week for this meeting at the Boys and Girls Club in downtown Roseville, which was a really good meeting. I think that the main topic that we had was the blueprint, which is really our, our plan for how the region grows over the next several years, state mandated plan that we have to do. And so we were looking at three different paths, if you will, that we're exploring to see, you know, where we're going to end up as a, as a body, as a region in terms of how we look at growth. Obviously, state wants us to really concentrate on infill, you know, as we move forward, as, not just as our region, but as, as a state. And then how much growth do we do into undeveloped land right now? How much development goes into farmland, things like that? So these are all things that we're looking at and really having a really robust conversation about it as, you know, every area is different. Obviously, for us, not a lot of growth for us to do outside of what we just talked about in terms of annexation and moving forward. We're pretty built out. It's a, in our, what is it, five square miles? Six square miles. So that's, that was a really good conversation. I mean, a lot more is going to happen. We have, we actually have a bill this year by Assembly Member Aggie Arcuri that's going to, that would give us two more years to actually complete our plan. And this would align us with both the Bay Area as well as San Joaquin Metropolitan Planning Agency. So we'd be kind of aligned from the valley all the way up to the Bay Area, having the same timeline. Right now, we're before them. We're trying to have until 2026, which would align us with both of those MPOs as well. So that's also working its way through the legislature right now. No, there's no opposition to it, but even a bill that has no opposition can run into issues as it goes forward. So we're kind of making sure that, that we get that bill passed. And it'll give us a little bit more time to really flesh out what we want to do as a region and how we look at transportation, at transit, a bunch of different things. So really important, really important discussions have to go forward over the next couple of years.
I was just going to ask the council, did each of you receive the invitation to the upcoming blueprint, what do they call it, workshop?
Workshop.
June 16th? I'm just curious.
Is it at Folsom?
At the Folsom Community Center. You should have all received that. I can forward it out to you if you did not. I, I would encourage you, it'd be a good education about the blueprint and also input to know what is going on with that. So I went to one, the one, last time they adopted the blueprint, it's, it's a good process. So I encourage you, if you can, to look at that. It's on June 16th, like I say, in Folsom. If you do, do not have that email, let me know, and I'll make sure I forward it to you.
Yeah. Go ahead and forward it out to everybody just in case. I know we all get a ton of emails. So, thank you, Cleve, and thank you for the reminder on that. Okay, that was SECOG. Piner?
Yes, actually, we just met. So we went over new branding. So they're changing some branding around and putting up some new colors and some new designs. So that was, that was approved. So you can sure be seeing that coming out on the new website here soon. They also gave a small presentation on some of the new bills that are coming up and which ones they're possibly going to sport, possibly not going to sport. So they're going to be going over that a little bit. And then, of course, we also talked a little bit about SB 1383. We are getting closer on that, unfortunately. I have Mr. Revos that has been assisting me with that, has been a great help. So we should be able to bring some information to the council here very soon.
All right. Awesome. Okay. FireSafe Council?
We haven't met since last meeting.
All right. There's been no two-by-two meetings. Opportunity DUCs?
They had a special meeting last week on grant funding for the Tahoe Coalition of the Homeless. I wasn't able to attend.
Understood. You will find that there are many special meetings with Opportunity DUCs. I'm not sure why they come up so frequently like that. It's probably a good question for staff on that.
Yeah. I was, I was on vacation at the time and I did not see, you know, stuff. And I wasn't able to do it because it was pretty last minute.
When I served last year, I think there was a period, there was about a six-week period where I think there was like four special meetings. And it was like, I...
They're not special anymore.
Yeah. I was like, what is going on? So I, bear with it. Okay, I will go ahead and open up any public comment on item 13. All right. Seeing none. Item 14, any requests for future agenda items?
No.
Nope. Okay. Item 15, any city manager or any staff reports? Anything? I know, we mentioned there were only a couple of folks left, but if anyone's still interested, you can go online for Community Cleanup Day and sign up for, to help on Saturday. So it'd be great to see everybody out there. Upcoming items, I'll let people look at that at their leisure. And at 8:32, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for everybody who stuck in with us. Appreciate it.